There we go. She's getting the signal. All right, I'm ready. So we're going to call the meeting to order of the Nishoba Regional School Committee tonight, March 1st at 6:30 PM. And, hi Joe. Come on in. So we're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join me at the choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, these are the comments. So first on the agenda is public comments, but I have none. I see no one in the gallery at this moment in time. We are going to welcome some special guests from the R-triple-A-C later on, and without objection, I would like to invite them to participate in that conversation under my direction. Later on, so hopefully they can join us at that point. So moving on here, we have the consent agenda, and I'll take a motion from the vice chair.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for March 1st, 2023, including the draft meeting minutes of February 15th, 2023, and the warrants of March 3rd, 2023.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
My understanding is that last time Mike made the motion for the two sets of minutes, but then the one that you withdrew was the one that actually was active. So that the minute, the warrants rather, were really the warrants of February 17th. And you amended your motion, I think, to say the warrants of the 10th. It should have been the 17th. They were backwards. So we'd just like to make that correction.
In this motion or in a later, that's from the motion from last week?
Well, it's got for the minutes. Yeah, it's kind of weird because that was the motion that you made, but it's not the motion I think that you meant to make because the warrants are really for the 17th, not the 10th. I don't know what's the procedure.
Well, can we do this first and then go back and amend that?
Because these are the minutes that this motion is approving, so I think she's suggesting that we amend the minutes or?
Or I see because the minutes have got the warrants in it, so I get them confused. Yeah.
I'm thoroughly confused now, so.
Yeah, so it's actually nothing against the warrant. They happen to be listed in the minutes.
Right. So as I recall, initially, I moved to approve the minutes of February 17th, but those were just issued and not ready to be approved. And so we withdrew, right? And so now those warrants are ready to be approved?
There were no warrants on the 10th, just on the 17th.
Because the agenda called, last agenda called for warrants of February 10th. And like what you're saying is that it should have said February 17th last week?
Yes.
And so?
Correct. So I think what, in reality, you're not necessarily amending, you're not amending the current warrants, you're amending the minutes of the previous meeting. Mark and Marie is what we're really.
Right, but it's kind of weird because the minutes do actively reflect what was moved and seconded, but not, I think not what's on your intentions. So.
So do we have a parliamentary solution for this?
Could we approve the minutes and then just like make an amended motion to correct what happened last time? Is someone?
Yes.
I don't know. You're the attorney.
The answer, Joe.
The, explain to me again if there was a confusion over the warrant, the warrants, correct?
I actually did go back and look at the tape, and I think the original motion was to accept the warrants of February 10th and February 17th. But then Mike said, oh wait, I'm going to withdraw that motion and make a new motion to just have them be the minutes of the warrants for February 10th. But there really were no warrants for February 10th. There were minutes for the 17th. So I think the amended motion was intended to be, to not do the warrants of the 10th, but to do them for the 17th. So is that a simple correction? It wouldn't, if we did the simple correction, it wouldn't accurately reflect what the motion was, but it would probably accurately reflect what you intended the motion to be. Because there were no warrants on the 10th, but there were on the 17th.
Because warrants are over two weeks.
Right. Okay, then what you want to do in that regard is, we will want to reapprove the minutes of our last meeting, and we can amend, we can include in that motion to correction to approve the appropriate minutes for the 17th of February.
Appropriate warrants.
I'm sorry, did I say minutes and not warrants? Yes, yeah. So because minutes can be amended at any time. We're not foreclosed from going back and reamending or reapproving or adjusting our minutes from past meetings. So we could probably do two more, we could approve the consent agenda for tonight, but before we do that, we might want to go back and amend our minutes from our last meeting where that fell apart.
Was the current motion seconded?
By me.
Okay.
So if you want to withdraw, I accept.
Okay, I will, I will withdraw the motion.
And I accept.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So we're going to amend the minutes from the last meeting. And that amendment needs to be that we should have made the motion to approve the warrants of February 17th.
Strike, strike approval of warrants for February 10th and insert when it's, excuse me, warrants of February 17th.
And does that require a vote?
Yes.
Okay, so in a motion?
Yes.
To do so, so?
Within the minutes.
We're making a motion to amend the minutes of February 15th.
Correct, yeah. And then we vote to approve the minutes as amended?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I'm going to move to amend the minutes of February 15th, to instead of calling for the approval of the February 10th warrant, to make it the approval of the February 17th warrant. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, so all those in favor of adjusting those minutes, raise your hand. Great, so those minutes are now fixed, and those are now properly inserted into the consent agenda of today.
So now I can make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so I will move to approve the consent agenda of March 1st, 2023, including the amended meeting minutes of February 15th, 2023, and the warrants of March 3rd, 2023.
I second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Well done, people. Great teamwork there. All right, so that was the consent agenda. We're going to move on to the school committee chairperson update, but I really have nothing more than what is already included in the agenda later on. So we will keep rolling toward the superintendent's report, an alternative to Superintendent Downing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad we don't vote approval of the report, so we don't have to correct any of my possible trip-ups here. I want to say we've had an exciting week, as we have so far, have approved our candidates, but everyone's in the primary principal position come through. We were scheduled to have three. We're not able to entertain that candidate on Tuesday, obviously, so that candidate will be coming on Monday, with our evening visitation with the community scheduled for Tuesday evening. So we're very excited to give our community an opportunity. We did solicit from the Lancaster community an opportunity to produce those questions. Mr. Wick and I will be looking at those on Friday, I think is when we'll be looking at them, and so that we're in preparation for Tuesday evening. So I want to thank our Lancaster community for joining in on that. The next piece I have for you is in regards to the NASSS Legislative Breakfast. That will be conducted this Friday at, in Newton, at the town offices there. This is going to be an important meeting for us. So the tri-county superintendents are going to be meeting with myself, myself and Ms. Friend will be attending, with all of our state legislatures across those zones. So we, our legislators have been invited to participate. It's to discuss things that are included in Governor Healy's budget that are education relative. So we'll be talking about issues of the 14% OD increase, of which in the initial budget, state budget, there's been some indicators there that the governor has earmarked $20 million in an emergency relief scenario, but when all the school systems combine their impact, it's actually closer to $95 million across the state that increase. So we'll be having some discussions there, as well as discussions around the circuit breaker reimbursement. We do know in the governor's budget that regional transportation was increased from a 75 reimbursement rate to a 90% reimbursement rate. So all of these things are positive steps forward. This Friday, we'll have a chance to interact with our legislators to voice our thoughts on how they can support school systems in their budget this year. The next piece is, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren, and he has got a budget update for you. We received initial numbers, and the House one numbers, last Friday, so we've been working vigorously to put some things together. I want to thank members of the committee that were able to come to the joint FINCON meeting between both Lancaster and Stowe, hosted by Stowe last evening, as we were able to plug those numbers in, rebuild some of the slides and produce that. And Mr. Mulcaren has a very short presentation I'll offer you to show you that summary.
Great, yes. So thanks for the opportunity, again, to present our updates for this evening. I am going to move right ahead into what the updates are specifically. So since our last meeting, obviously, we received the governor's preliminary budget with regard to the education. I think the full budget finally came out today. So the good news is our Chapter 70 has been increased. It's up significantly. I think we also shared some predictors on what a 2% or a 4% increase would look like, and this is significantly more than that. We've also received an update on our foundation enrollment. We'll talk about that a little bit further as that impacts the assessment for our member towns. We had charter school tuition information come in, and it's a little bit less than we had predicted and estimated. And then again, what Superintendent Downing spoke to with regards to regional transportation has increased. I just want to remind the committee and the public that the 90% reimbursement is not 90%, 90% of our entire cost. We have students that are eligible as reimbursement based on how far they live from their schools, and we submit those numbers to the state, and we get 90% on that. So it's not exactly a 90% reimbursement on our total cost. So some internal work that we've done is we've sort of honed in on what we believe our E-rate offset will be to our technology hardware, so therefore there's a decrease in that line because we'll get our reimbursement, which will support the hardware that's been submitted by our technology manager, Succi. The heating oil update, based on our collective bid participation, we're looking at another additional savings of $25,000. And then also, just as note for the committee, we received our E&amp;D certification, and it's been certified at one point, almost $5 million, which therefore means that we can now officially appropriate that into the FY '24 budget. So the overall result of this is we're now at about $64.9 million, which is a 4.3% increase from this year's operating budget.
If I can stop for a minute, I want to be clear with the committee that the $1.5 million certification, E&amp;D, does not mean $1.5 million of the E&amp;D is now applied to the budget. We have planned $1.2 million in our budget processes, so essentially what that means is as we augment our budget with $1.2 million, our E&amp;D account then carries a $300,000 balance, which frankly gives us a little bit of breathing room to handle some things that we'll talk about later, particularly when we talk about the regional agreement.
Thank you. So no major changes to our drivers per se. Obviously, something like utilities comes down a little bit because we've had some savings due to our collective bid process, but you can still see how things are broken out across those drivers in our budget. So now we're more of an estimated revenue standpoint, so if you recall the last several presentations, those top four rows were sort of highlighted in orange as they were estimated, excuse me, as they were predicted or proposed based on last year's. We didn't change them, but now those have been updated. We know with the Bolton assessment, Lancaster assessment, Stowe assessment will be as long, as well as our Chapter 78, and obviously there's been a change to our regional transportation reimbursement from where we were at our previous budget presentations. Our foundation enrollment is now in, so the October 1, '22 is now here. We also, in our FINCON presentation last night, and we'll put it in the future budget presentations, as well as just showing what all those foundation changes were for the high school over those years.
Mr. Mulcaren, can you go back to that slide? I just want to point something out to the committee that in previous presentations we've shared with you, trend lines of our enrollment, if you look carefully at October 1 of '22, for the first time that I can see in the 24 years that I've dated collected on enrollment, we have more students participating in the school system from the town of Lancaster than we do from the town of Bolton. And I think that's an important trend line to pay attention to that we pointed out last year, so.
No changes here, just obviously for information purposes as it feeds our assessment. So this is where we are as a big picture. Again, our proposed budget, where the local revenues change, our minimum local contributions are now updated, and therefore where we stand relative to each town's assessment. Bolton is currently at a 3.32 change from last year, Lancaster 4.76, and Stowe 2.82. And again, here's the sort of historical look at our voted budgets with our proposed as of today, and the summary of our budget updates throughout this budget season with obviously the notable changes from Chapter 70 and charter school assessments, as well as our E-rate offset and that additional oil savings that's predicted for next year. And this is where we stand today on 3-1. Again, so some things have changed here. School choice assessment is still something that we need to hone in on, and then obviously we're in negotiations with Unit A, and then there will be negotiations with Unit C.
So I'd like to maybe get pause here before we move on to strategic plan updates?
Yes.
And give the committee any opportunity if they'd like to ask a question, either about the Mary, or about the Lancaster principal search, or about the budget update.
I think that at the last meeting, there was conversation about, it was 1% or 2% of the total increase that we see in this is directly related to the 14% increase in the costs to the private schools. Is that right?
Not quite.
Okay.
It just represents a delta in the special education budget. Also in there is we've had families that have moved in, some students who require services, both of those.
Okay.
So it's the increase as well as services promised to be delivered to students.
So if some good news comes out of more money to help pay for that 14% increase, then there's potential that this can go down?
All right, there is, in terms of the offsets that we would have, the circuit breaker, for instance. The state budgets typically are not resolved until early summer months anyhow, so we wouldn't feel that until later. So we'll be after our budget process, before anything is actualized with that. But just know that if that's the case, then we know that then those circuit breaker amounts are applied, and then there's turnbacks into E&amp;D, so that the, we don't lose the money in the system, it stays within the ecosystem of the budgets.
All right, so bear with me. I'm going to throw some numbers, but I'm sure you're very familiar with the numbers. As of the February 15th update, we had a placeholder number for Chapter 70 at just over $9 million, about 9.1. When we got the cherry sheet and we saw that our numbers went up to about 9.8, that was about a difference of about $700,000. But instead of our budget from the February 15th meeting going from $64,997.516 down to about $64,200 because of that $700,000 gain, we only went down by less than $100,000. And so I wonder where that, where that, how do we, how do we square that?
So the Chapter 70 increase in revenue does not change our prediction on what it's going to cost to run the school district and deliver the educational program for next year. What it does do is increase the local, what's called, or increase of the revenues from the state, which means that the assessments to the towns ultimately change for what their portion of the share is. So if you went back to the, drive here for a second. So if we went back to the updated assessment projection from the previous school committee, the FY '24 percentage increase for each one of the towns in the bottom right would be higher than it is today, because the increased revenue from the state decreases the local share of the assessment of the budget. It does not change what we believe will take to run the educational program and therefore the operating budget for next year. It increases a revenue, which then sort of becomes an offset to the town assessments that wasn't there before, was not predicted before.
Okay, so that answers my second question, which was, why did the total budget only drop by a little bit, but our local assessments really dropped?
Right, the total budget only dropped due to these additional budget updates with the offset from the E-rate prediction, and then also a little bit more of a change from the heating oil update.
Said another way, the budget is the driver side, Chapter 70 funds are the revenue sides. So Chapter 70 doesn't change your budget, it just changes the share of your expenses.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions?
It's more of a con. It might be nice, you have been tracking how the, as the numbers change, the budget has been going down. It might be useful to do the same thing for the assessments to the town, so we can see how those have gone down, because that's really good news, and it's a little hard to see in here.
Yeah.
So to that, Madam Chair?
Of course.
Thank you for the recognition. To that point, we gave our presentation to the joint FINCON meetings of the three towns last night, and we will provide that presentation to all of you. It did go into some of those elements as well, so we'll make sure that that's included in the school committee packet for the hearing next week.
I would like to say that I was at the joint finance committee meeting last night on Zoom, and I thought you guys did a great job of explaining the progression of this budget building process, and by the lack of questions at the end, I think it was, you know, well received. We had a couple of good questions, but everybody else seemed pretty satisfied, and that's a good thing.
Well, I was worried that we just put them to sleep.
Always.
Well, that's those that love a good spreadsheet.
So, I mean, there is definitely good news in this presentation, Ross. Can you go back to the part where it talks about the assessment increases? That fun box there. So, I mean, those numbers are shrinking, and you're telling, I think that they are kind of within thresholds that the towns consider acceptable. Would you argue?
Yeah, we've had conversations with all three of the town administrators in our regularly, regular monthly meetings. I know we were able to have conversations with at least two of those three town administrators in the last two days, and yes, these numbers get them within the ranges that they deemed acceptable.
Can you meet with them again soon?
We do in March, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions about the budget?
So on the detailed side, it's not the summary side, this isn't a huge cost, it's like a $10,000 increase from last year, but on center school, there's extracurricular advisors being added, and I know it's because they can do more stuff now, but I just was wondering, I guess, could those be things that are charged for instead of being part of the budget?
It could be.
But this is offering some free stuff.
Yeah, and I think across the district, we do a really strong job of offering those pieces, and I think that that would be a conversation potentially for another budget season. But yeah, the increase there, and I think there's minimal increases in other buildings as well. I think Principal Delsky's just brought in some new ideas, and it predicts that she'll have some staff available, so interested in helping run those activities after school. So that's why there's that increase there. But to your point of should we consider charging for those as an offset, whether it's entirety or portion thereof, is certainly something we can discuss in the future.
But yeah, I mean, I love the ad. I was just wondering. And it, that reminded me that it aligns with the other schools too, because there's different clubs at different schools. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so moving on with the updates on strategic plan?
You bet. At this point, I would like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching Learning, Ms. Laura Friend, to give you an update on some exciting professional development coming up. Ms. Friend?
My favorite topic, teaching and learning. So we're pleased to provide the committee with an update of our full day of professional learning on March 17th. Not sure if the committee has had a chance to take a look at some of the hyperlinks that were in the update, but we're really excited about the day. This day actually marks, it's been three years since the district has been able to come together in person under one roof to engage in our full day of professional learning. So we're really, really excited about the day and how it's shaped up. To provide a summary of the day, we really galvanized around three goals for the day, and that was, they're listed here. The first being to engage the voices of our Nishoba graduates. So you may remember earlier in the fall, I had shared with the committee that we had put out a solicitation to our graduates from the past 10 years, where you now, Nishoba. I'd like to thank Jody Speck, our guidance counselor at the high school and department chair, for helping me with those efforts. But that solicitation provided us with 78 respondents, Nishoba graduates, who provided us with feedback about what they're doing now and the advice they have for us about what skills and competencies are, they learned at Nishoba, and what skills and competencies they're finding have been critical in their current life. And so we've taken all of that feedback, including interviews, and put it together in a compilation video, which we will be sharing with our faculty and staff as part of our opening session on the 17th, as well where we've invited those graduates to come join us for the day. And two graduates in person are going to help us kick off the day with their own story, how they've paved their path after Nishoba. So that's been super validating and enlightening and informative, and I think we're really, really excited about sharing and showcasing the voices of our actual graduates with our faculty and staff to start the day on the 17th. The other two goals relative to the day include really focusing on work of our strategic plan and universal design for learning, so providing our staff with a variety of professional development workshops to meet their needs based on their grade span, their discipline, their area of expertise, and their role and responsibility, aligned with seven learning pathways that you see are listed there, that are all related directly to our strategic plan. The results of our offerings, we will be offering three different sessions throughout the day, and in totality, over 70 workshops throughout the day. I'm pleased to share that we have 32 faculty and staff presenters, and that combined with some external presenters are really going to provide for a robust opportunity of learning for our staff. We're going to complete the day, coming together as a staff with a whole Nishoba faculty and staff community photo, and of course, some small Nishoba swag, but we're excited about that. I would like to invite the committee, if you're available and willing to join us on that day, we would love to have you participate in any or all of the workshops. It's going to be a great day, and we'd love to have you join in with us, even if you're only able to attend part of it. Please just email me, and we'll make sure that you're well taken care of. We'd love to have you. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of our teaching and learning department, Dr. Boynton and Jody Speck, our high school department chairs, our full day of professional development committee, and our administrators and Superintendent Downing for their support. And as we work to put together the ideas for this day, we're really excited for our staff and faculty, and I think, and I hope that they are too. So, thank you. And thank you to the committee too for your support. We'd love to have you join us. March 17th.
Great. All right, any questions about teaching and learning, updates to strategic work? We wish you the very best on that day and we're so grateful that you make our teachers' lawyers for the day, so, and all of our staff members.
We would love to be able to share the video from our graduates, if that would be appropriate and welcome. I'm sure it would be, but we'd love to share that as well.
Yeah, the next week maybe.
Their voices are critical to our work.
March 15th.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I have a question. I think that's fantastic, especially that two graduates will be there and I like the idea of the video. I'm wondering if you were, got any maybe negative feedback that will help figure out areas of improvement? I'm sure you don't want to share the negative that day because you want to motivate and like, like have a positive vibe for that, for that day. But I'm just wondering if there was anything that came back that is helpful to make improvements.
Super insightful question, thank you. We did receive one piece of feedback that was quite constructive. I reached out to that individual individually and invited that individual to come in and meet in person with myself and Dr. Boynton. In terms of the other feedback, it was generally super affirming and positive. And we want to balance that affirmation with that drive to continually improve. So what we're going to, what we'll see in the video is I learned all kinds of great things while I was at Nishoba. Here's what I'm finding right now that is necessary for me in my current role, job, schooling, that I wished I had learned. So it's in that, in that aspect that we're hoping our teachers will walk away saying.
Nice, I could reflect on that. Fantastic. Great. So we're going to move on forward here beyond the superintendent's report. And I noticed that our student representative, Dan Aldy, is here with us today. Hi, Dan.
Hello.
Hello. What can you share with us?
It was a quiet week for Stuko this week. Unfortunately, my computer gets a little malfunction.
We've had some Wi-Fi issues today.
Perfect timing.
It's my Chromebook. It has this issue where the keys sometimes do not work. So I have to use my on-screen keyboard.
But that's not a district issue, right?
It doesn't look like one.
What a situation.
That said, we have had a successful chess tournament that happened before the break. I hosted that. We have an upcoming volleyball tournament somewhere between March 6th and March 15th. We have an upcoming Project 351 clothing drag, which is going to be a competition by grade to see who can donate the most clothes. It's for the Cradles to Crayons, anyone familiar with that? And there's going to be Stuko School Spirit merchandise coming soon. So looking forward to that. That's all.
Awesome. Thanks, Dan. Any questions for our student representative?
Yes, I have the DECA competition. Did you guys have one?
Was that the one before the break? They bring to the mock competition?
Yeah. Oh, it was just a mock one.
Yeah, I knew there was a mock competition before break.
The state competition tends to be in March.
Oh, the district doesn't change.
Madam Chair, may I have a piece to Dan's report?
Yeah.
Our robotics team will be launching a robot at their first competition this weekend at Bridgewater State, Ms. Friend, is that right? I know, I know they're, I know they're testing at WPI.
They're at WPI tonight.
Yeah, so, so very excited, they're excited about their machine this year. So we hope, we wish them well, hope they do well.
And one more thing, there's going to be some students volunteering from Nishoba who are going to be at the event at Utah Dava. And they're going to, they're going to be acting as student ambassadors on that, on that date, March 17th.
That's fantastic.
Isn't there a production of Mamma Mia coming up too at the high school?
March 17th?
March 17th.
It's going to be a big day.
I don't know if we can do it for around Mamma Mia.
Yeah, maybe everybody can wear their leprechaun gear and crane.
Mamma Mia.
Yeah, Mamma Mia. Very good. All right, any other questions for Dan? As always, Dan, we appreciate you joining us. Thanks, bud.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, guys, new business. We're going to head over to talking about the college report card presentation.
Madam Chair, I'm going to give Ms. Friend the honor of introducing our fabulous department chair this evening. So, Ms. Friend, would you like to give that introduction?
I would like to welcome Jody Speck to our committee this evening. I had shared with Jody that not only is she appreciated and valued for all that she brings to the high school and to our students and to the department and to our community, but also to the committee for bringing us this information every year. I know we look forward to hearing from you on it. And we also recognize the time and energy it took to put together the presentation. So thank you, Jody.
Well, this year's a little different. So we'll start off with just sitting on that front page, right? A different perspective than we usually take. Those of you who, I haven't been doing this for years and years, I often am presenting on last year's graduating class and where they all went. And it does get a little boring because we do good, we do good things and it comes off. And there's been questions over the years about what happens when they leave and kind of in line with what Laura's talking about, voices from our post grads. I took a look at that this year. Much harder than I thought it would be. There is nothing like clean data in this world for college. But, so I pulled together and we won't get into the, into the weeds with it. However, just this morning, I did get an update from Common App. So in line with what I usually do in telling you the state of the state, I thought I would share this. There were 1,215,022 distinct first year applicants to the 841 returning Common App institutions. And that is a 30, that is a 21% increase from 1920. So they're picking that pre- pandemic year. So 1,000.2 distinct applicants to those 841 colleges. Underrepresented minorities were up by 31% in that time. First gen were up by 36% in that time. And international applicants tripled in that time. Overall, the applications to Common App privates were up 24%. Publix were up 38%. This is that last year before the pandemic. And the more selective the school, the more their applications went up. So just more confirmation of the trend that we're on. Not to be a heavy downer on all this stuff, but, so now what we're going to do is we're going to look back a little bit. And I think if, if you can back up, you might, there you go. So we're going to start kind of high end. This is a look at the nation. Okay. And what this chart is, is that four-year cohort post-graduation, right, post-college. So it's aged 25 to 29-year-olds. Okay? The percentage, it's looking at the snapshot of the nation. This is going to include newcomers. So this is the degree holding status. High school numbers are great, associates or higher bachelors. You can see the total US is 39%. Masters are higher, much lower. Massachusetts, I think I found a stat along the way, about 54% of the 25 to 34-year-olds, so a larger group, about 50, about half of the 25 to 34-year-olds hold a bachelor's. And 45% for everybody over age 25. So again, it's a different chunk, but it kind of sets the stage. Now we look at college completion rates. And the first thing I would say is this is looking at those who matriculate into two-year and four-year colleges. And a number of years ago, we changed the common graduation statistic from four years to six years. So it's a six-year completion rate. Okay? This particular set of data is out of the clearing house and they can divide it by starting institution. When I talk about data not being clean anywhere, about 3% or so of the colleges don't report to the clearing house and about 5% of the kids withhold their information from the clearing house. So no data, any, you'll see there's sort of different chunks of numbers. But this is that, again, the six-year completion rate. This is another look at that and I like it. These are the government statistics. So this comes from the National Center for Education Statistics. All colleges have to report. And if we start in that green box, the cohort year 2015, the graduation rate, again, that, that six-year graduation rate for a bachelor's, this is just bachelor's, was about 65%. And this is based on roughly 2,000 institutions. These are your Title IV institutions, of which this is, represents about a third of them. I'm not sure why they called these institutions out. What I like is the chart on the left, which pulls out, you can see that top blue line are the service academies. They have a very high graduation rate. The next highest is New England. Okay, super strong here. And down on the bottom left, the graduation rate for the Nishoba class of 2015, within 150% of time, so six years, for our bachelor-seeking students was 85%. Not bad. So when I pull our clearinghouse data for our class of 2015, can you guys slow me down or speed me up if, if you need to? So first, I would say these are just bachelor's degrees. And if we look to the left, this is the years to degree for all of our students matriculating into a bachelor's program. I have on the pie chart the, the kids who have not finished yet and also the no records. I will tell you some of the no records. I could tell the student had probably withheld their information somewhere along the way. I could tell by the student and by the institution that this was somebody who had probably graduated. But I don't have the records. Okay? And so again, 85% of our kids that I have data on finished, we have the not finished. And the key thing here that I like is the national rate, six years, but look at 80% of our kids took four years to earn their degree. Okay? And roughly 15% of them already have earned a master's. We have a law degree. We have a few in med school, a couple in PhD programs, one in a FARMD, and others are ongoing. And again, I'm only getting data through spring of '22, so enrollment data. Okay? Does this make sense? Next, we're going to look at the associate's degrees. And I clipped over a piece from the, the Center for, National Center for Education Statistics. You know, the overall graduation at 150% of normal time, which for an associate's is three years, is roughly a third. 17% have transferred to a different institution. The percentage of students who had not graduated from their first institution and were no longer enrolled was 42% for the public institutions. So it's, it's a, it's not, I start to say it's not an encouraging statistic, but keep in mind that our, that the two-year colleges in this nation are serving not just high school students, but newcomers to the country, returning adults, folks who have gone to get their GED late in life and then started college. So these statistics, you know, are not really comparable to those bachelor's. But these guys are near and dear to my heart. And when I look at these numbers and I think about the kids who didn't finish, again, eight transferred from a two-year to a four-year and that's why they didn't finish. They did one year at the two-year and went off. Another 25% finished their degree. I'm particularly excited about Laura's work with the My Portrait and the work that we're doing on My Cap, because the intention of this initiative is to start career exploration activities down in the middle school and really relating what am I doing in school to what are my employment and career opportunities out there? In our community, we have a lot of students who live in families with an expectation that there will be a college degree, that that issue of schooling terminates with a, with a four-year degree. And if they don't exactly know what they want to do when they head off to college, that's okay because sort of that momentum will carry them. But if you don't exactly know what you want to do when you head off to college and your family doesn't hold that core expectation for you, then it, there can be some wobbling, you know, aside from all the financial considerations that there are that we know in college. And so the work that we can do with them, starting in middle school and robustly through high school, doing more career exploration and more connections with career opportunities, the more we can solidify who you are and why you are going to classes, especially if you don't love academics. It's hard to do this if you don't love academics, right? So I think that the My Cap work and rolling it into My Portrait is just the right thing at the right time. And I'm so excited about that opportunity. Next, we're going to look at the transfer profile. And I put this little inside of higher ed piece up a number of years ago. It came out and it was a big kerfluffle around, oh my God, a third of kids are transferring colleges, we're wasting money. And when we look at this, community colleges were the top destination for the student transfer from four-year institutions with about half of these transfers being kids moving from four-year colleges to two-year colleges. And when this first came out, I did a, a quick study to see where our transfers really liked that and they weren't. So I was pleased that they still are not that now. Okay, so they're saying in 2015, a third of the students are transferring college. For our total post-secondary enrollment, the transfer rate was 18%. But let's take out those 18 that went from two-year to four-year. Somewhere down there. Look, the yellow is students transferring from an in-state public. The others are the more expensive options, in-state, out-of-state, private and out-of-state public. And the out-of-state publics are shooting up there with the privates these days. Okay? And I will tell you, I think the most common transfer for our in-state public was to another in-state public, like going from Worcester State to UMass Lowell, or UMass Boston to UMass Amherst. Nobody transferred out of UMass Amherst or UMass Lowell. I think this is a really good news slide, to be honest with you. So then we say, all right, that class of 2015, what did they actually major in at college? What did they do? And again, we're given the messy data. Every college calls their degree something else and defines it differently. There's no quick and easy way to kind of summarize this briefly. But I like the message in this slide. Our kids are looking around and doing some interesting things. And whether it's global studies and languages, or agriculture and aquarium science, right, resource economics. or agriculture and aquarium science, right, resource economics. The other piece, I would note, these degrees, the highest frequency institutions, UMass Amherst, '22, UMass Lowell, '20, Pittsburgh State, '09, UNH, '08, WPI, '09, Quinnipiac, '06. So our kids are going to all sorts of different schools, and they're staying there and graduating. Our majors fairly mirror the national, the NCES, most popular majors, business, the sciences, engineering, psychology is losing ground. It used to be up there on the top. Liberal arts, you know, are really falling off, and STEM is really taking over. For us, for sure, business, engineering, and then science, okay? And then, let's cut off just a little bit down bottom, but it says NRHS class of 2023, where will they go? These are the acceptances to date with more to come. And this, I want to give, those of you who have seen me before, know that the guidance department puts up a big display. This takes up half a wall, probably outside our office. And our seniors, as they make decisions on where they are going, they will come down and print out their college or school or military, whatever icon. And actually, we have little cars, and they will, they'll all be heading up the road there. So these are the acceptances we have. Ask kids to make decisions on where they will go. They will, they will post their destination here.
Impressive list.
So far, yeah.
Well, thank you.
And this, this was done by students. Didn't they do a marvelous job? Those are our three little towns. I, I, this is, we've had great displays over the years, but I am in love with this one. Those are our little town buildings there, and the plane in the background. I just think they.
I love how they've taken the strategic plan.
The geography, they're really going with it.
Yep, we, we gave them the, where will, that's what we do, is we give them our, you know, last year it was the full, first Wolves to Leave the Den, and this year it was Where Will the Great Road Take You? And they just, they come up with it and put it together and.
That's really great. Thanks, Jody. We appreciate it. I wonder if there are questions from the committee on the presentation? There's a lot of data. Go ahead, Chandler.
I'm just curious, are you seeing any shifts sort of in the COVID era of where people are applying or going or getting into?
I thought we would see more students staying close to home, and I think COVID kind of kept us for a year. We're out of that. We're back to looking all across the US. And because New England is always the most competitive and the most expensive, our kids do go out further places. What we're seeing, what COVID did with ripping away the test scores was really, that's that increase in applications that I'm talking about. And we're also hitting that in the demographic shift where the majority becomes minority in the, on the college campus, you know, that age group. And so that's the tripling of the first-gen students, the tripling of the minority students. I'm surprised to see the tripling of the international students. I somehow didn't, I thought that number would be lower.
One thing that I notice, and I see it in my own practice, is I'm looking over at the completion rates nationally.
Yep.
And how, it's maybe the second slide, yeah, that one. How much better girls are doing than boys.
Always.
And so I just feel like that number feels very high. You know, the highest levels of education, women are graduating at a higher rate than men are.
Yep.
I wonder if in Nishoba, like in my school, that girls are taking more of the higher-level classes and how we can make sure that that doesn't become an inequity. Do you have any statistics about our kids? I mean, so few of them don't graduate, but are you noticing any of that gender disparity?
Not pronounced, and honestly, we would want to look at it over three or four years. Different classes have different profiles. But I would tell you that nationally, in all of the data that I look at everywhere, the girls are graduating at a higher rate than the boys. I know, right?
You're talking about higher ed, right? Because the high school gap has actually shrunk.
Higher ed.
Well, yeah, so higher ed.
And it's a growing gap. Because if you look at the 2010 to 2021, for the bachelor's degree, it was an eight-point gap in '10 and a 10-point gap in 2021. So it's a growing gap.
So just something to note. Go ahead, Karen.
I'm curious if you are seeing any impact on kids now that the technical high schools are becoming very popular and much more competitive than they were certainly when I was going to that school? It doesn't seem like it's as easy an option necessarily for, for some students. And if you're seeing an impact of that, I realize that they're applying in middle schools, not necessarily when they are leaving. But are you finding that those kids need, that maybe would have benefited from that type of program, but maybe don't get in, are needing some different types of supports to kind of find their road than, say, 10 or 15, 20 years ago?
So this is also, this goes back to the MyPortrait and the MyCap piece and the visioning that we're doing with the new high school and looking at more experiential-type learning and more thinking out of the box and what ways can we roll in, things like internships and those types of pieces, yeah? We see the need for that for everyone.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, any other questions for Jenny?
Jody, do you see any long-term trends for graduates that are choosing either a gap year or deferring their college path or are simply going right into industry? Is that, has it changed over time? Is that stable?
I haven't really seen that, to be honest with you. We don't, so whether it's a gap year or deferring for a year, we work with the kids to apply because we think that having a plan for the following September increases your probability of following through with that plan. So we have them work through the application process, choose a college, saying, you may change it somewhere along the way, but let's get you a plan for September. So we tend to know who they are, and it's very rare. You know, it's, it's not a lot of kids who do that. Even the kids who feel like, ooh, I'm going to work and make money, we try to help them get connected with at least going to the community college part-time. But if you're out, you get that full-time paycheck, you get, you start separating from your peers. You don't feel, it's harder to go back.
All right. Well, thanks, Jody. We really appreciate your time, your energy, and all of this great information. All right, good. So we're going to move on to our next item of new business, and that is the warrant procedures. And I'm going to turn it over to our Chair of Budget and Warrant to give us a brief recommendation.
Sure, yep. Of course, everyone remembers we had a training on the warrants back in, I think, December or January. And this is sort of, kind of a follow-through, budget warrant meeting, a budget warrant met right before today's meeting. And we took a look at some of the language about our warrant procedure, whether it's in our school committee manual, the business office, the budget fiduciary responsibilities. And there's really not knowledge outlining what we need to do in terms of who needs to sign off. I think when I came on board, it was just an assumption that everyone signed it. And during COVID, it was designated to one person. We went back to everybody. And so in an effort to try to streamline the process so that we don't have any holds on authorizations or payroll deductions, the Budget Warrant Subcommittee is offering the following recommendation, that the Shoba Regional School District School Committee shall require a minimum of three signatories, including one member from each town for the purposes of authorizing payroll and accounts payable. The provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of non-compliance. Once signed by the three members, the warrants can be thereby included as part of the consent agenda for approval at subsequent regular school committee meetings. So in effect, what this is saying is that if we accept this language, only one person per town is required in order to authorize payroll and accounts payable, rather than having all 11. And I think that that would probably prevent having to track everybody down and saying, you still need signatures, because I think the last thing anyone wants is to hold off those payments. So that is what we are recommending. In addition to this, and then the next, and we can provide this in the update, or maybe this is the update. We're going to consider meeting twice a month, once just for evaluating the warrants, and the other one for the warrants, and regular business meetings so that prior to each sub, each school committee meeting, Budget Warrant has had an opportunity to look at the warrants.
So long.
Yep.
All right. So that feels like two separate procedural elements that you are recommending?
We are actually only recommending the language for the warrants, and we can decide on the meeting frequency within our Subcommittee. Just so everyone knows, that was sort of part of our conversation.
All right, Amy.
Yeah, so one question would be, how are we determining who from each town is taking that responsibility? Is that just among the elected officials from each town to work out one themselves? Or is it just whoever's first, or is that?
I think, yeah, it's a good question. And we had considered that, and I think we were very purposeful about not including that language so that it is decided within the reps from each town, whether they want to designate one person or whether they just say, first to the gate wins. I think that that's probably okay to be decided within each grouping from each town.
Did you consider having the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee members be the signatories? Considering you have members from all three towns?
We had thought about that. And Scott brought up a great point. I mean, first of all, it's a great point. Maureen brought it up. And then Scott brought up the point that we didn't want to do that at the Budget Warrant meeting because sometimes it's difficult to schedule those meetings. And if we wait to authorize them at the meetings, and the meeting can't be held, and we're holding up payroll, and we don't want that either. So we kind of wanted to keep the looseness of the language so that it was flexible in terms of the timing.
I have another question that's escaping me, but to follow up on Leah's. It still could be the members from the Budget Warrant Subcommittee who are identified as the signing members regardless of the timing, right? Like, it doesn't have to be the same, doesn't have to be like at the meeting that you're.
I suppose, yeah.
It just might be an easy way to make, to, I don't know, identify responsibility.
I just have to say that the language we chose was deliberately loose. We were trying not to be overly prescriptive. We wanted to make sure it gave the towns and the committee as much flexibility as possible because, you know, we wanted to make sure each town was represented, but not to say who it had to be, or that, you know, it had to be a specific person, or. We just wanted to make it procedurally easy to get there because we don't want to hold up the warrants unnecessarily. So, you know, if you're a town, if you're the first resident from your town to approve, and your town doesn't have any complaints about you approving it, then go ahead and sign off on it, you know? We didn't want to be saying, no, you have to choose this person, or anything like that. It was, you know, it's intentionally flexible.
So in that scenario, would whoever's first to the gate, as Mike said, then like be in touch with the other people from their town? Like, hey, I signed the warrant this week?
If they want.
Or is it more just when you're checking, you see that there's already a signature?
It could be. I think it's more for the business office. So the business office doesn't have to hunt people down, right?
So if they've got their three signatures there, then the requirement's met. If other people want to sign them, they can, and it's, okay.
Right.
I remembered my second question, which is the language that you, your Subcommittee crafted, was that taken from? Did you develop it? Did it come from Tracy Noobek or like MASC?
It did not come from Tracy. It was kind of a hybridization of Mass General Law, MASC and, yeah, Mass General Law and MASC, and then we kind of customized it.
Mike's being humble with his brainchild.
I'm not surprised.
I'm going to perhaps recognize, Mr. Mulcarren, what do you think? Or could you weigh in on this?
So my thoughts are that we've had some times where we're cutting it close with having the right number of signatures. I think what this affords us is that now we're waiting for three. However, we might be waiting, if we have the two from, you know, Bolton and Lancaster, and we're waiting for Stowe, we still might be having to track down a member from Stowe. However, I do think that there's benefit if there's coordination within the town representatives for each town to say, hey, I'm on vacation this week. I won't be able to review my email and Doc, you signed the warrant. I think that only facilitates it being completed and moving forward, so.
And perhaps each delegation is responsible for deciding that, maybe even on an annual basis, or with special exceptions for vacations and such?
I think the only thing we would need from our office is to, if there is a specific person designated, whether there's a backup or something like that, that we're just notified of that. So we're contacting the right people in case we're missing something. Things happen in people's lives, right? And that might not be available. So as long as we know what the plan is, then we can, we can do that.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
I just want to emphasize to the committee, and it's in the motion, recommend the motion, it doesn't absolve anyone from their responsibility of examining the warrants. Everybody should still do that and put their best effort into approving the warrants. This is simply a mechanism that helps us keep the wheels of government rolling in a more streamlined way.
We also had a question. Scott, you had a question about where this language lives?
From a governance point of view, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what governing document does this fit into and where does it fit into that document? You know, like, just in general, I mean, for this committee, I have difficulty trying to figure out where to track down governing documentation. And so I'm just wondering where this is going to wind up.
Is it in the policy manual, warrant signing?
Yeah, no, it's outlining Mass General Law. And the committee can vote to assign somebody to do the warrants. And then you all, so what this must would do is it's a procedure that you're saying is, this is the minimum by which. So locally, we're saying, this is the minimum by which we approve to get the wheels moving. So there is no place where that lives other than in the record of the minutes of the meeting.
It's not a policy?
It's a general law.
No, the requirement to sign the warrants is a general law, but how we choose to do it is up to us. That's what I got out of Tracy's, we don't have a policy?
I don't, I don't know that we have a policy on it, and we only have very vague language in our school committee manual. I imagine that that's, at the very minimum, that's where it should live.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was going to suggest.
May I interject on that point?
Sure.
I would recommend that the committee do not develop a policy on this to the point that was made earlier, you want to remain agile. The movement and attitude of the next iteration of this committee may say, we want to vote a designate because it's outlined that way in Mass General Law. So if you, if you craft a policy to that, you're going to be limiting your agility in the future to change that without going through that process.
I don't know that we have to put it as a policy, but it should live in some document other than the minutes of this meeting because then you go hunting for it someday. Like, what meeting did we do that at, and where are the minutes? I mean, we need to have some other more general document.
It could be a part of our protocol.
Okay.
Could you all draft something to add to the protocol language that we can vote on at the next meeting? We're not meant to vote on this tonight. We're going to be voting on this at the next meeting, which is on the 15th, I think we put it. Twenty, great. I wonder if we could just add to the protocol document?
Is there, I'm just trying to understand the, why a protocol and not the school committee manual?
That's because the protocols are easier to amend as opposed to a policy?
I'm not talking about a policy. Is the school committee manual a policy?
No, no, it's a guiding document.
It's a guiding document. It's a guiding document of how we operate and...
I don't see why it could be.
I think it would fit in there.
Well, right, yeah.
And aren't we in the process of updating that anyway?
Okay, so that could just be part of our practice in the manual?
Because, and aren't we, as a school committee, isn't one of our goals to update that regularly anyway? Like, if the membership changes, as Superintendent says?
Okay, so perhaps, would you be able to come up with, if it's being, kind of some clear language that we could put into a motion? To add this to the manual? Maybe interface with policy and communication, to see where it might fit in? And any other questions before we begin?
I'm not the one that has to chase down people, so I'll defer to the people that have to do that. I'm just wanting to share concern that if there's a vacancy in the committee, and that town has less representatives at that moment, this might actually be harder to chase down than our existing policy, and I just wanted to know if we considered that scenario in this change.
It feels to me like, worst-case scenario, we would just be exactly where we are now, where we are hunting down other members, right? There's a vacancy, and I still think we're just, someone is, someone is looking for someone from a particular town to sign off, and it's certainly going to be easier than hunting down everybody. That's just my initial thought.
I'm just too comfortable with the idea of absolving one of the towns of having input into budgets and warrants, so I think...
I'm amenable to, to, like, as a Stowe delegation, I would want to encourage my fellow members to empower one of the budget and warrant subcommittee members to do that, to become that person. We work hard to make sure that that committee is representative, and so, although it would not absolve me, I would still say, you know, Scott and Maureen, maybe one of you could be that person, that sort of thing. But the delegations could have those conversations, um, for themselves.
Yeah.
Question?
Well, I was just to adjust Mr. Simon's concern is, you can put a second provision to that. The provision is you outline, or majority of the sitting members.
I'm just making sure that I understand this. Are you, what you're suggesting is that when the, right now, we get a docu-sign notification, and we are all asked to sign those warrants. So, are you proposing that that docu-sign only goes to certain people that are selected, or are you saying that docu-sign still goes to everyone? So, if the docu-sign still goes to everyone with the thought that everyone will sign it, then is it simply that after one person from each town has signed it, then the business office is authorized?
Correct.
So, I guess I'm wondering, why do we need to make it, have a designated signer from each town, if we're still sending it to everyone, and we're still looking for 11 signatures on it? Then why do we need to designate a particular representative from each town to be the signer?
Can I answer that really quickly?
Sure.
The reason why I said that is because it's my expectation with the new procedures that budget warrant are putting in place, is that they fine-toothed combed it. And so, whereas I look at it and I go over it, I haven't sat with other people and had discussions about it, and really looked at it in depth through multiple lenses. Whereas the budget and warrant subcommittee is actively doing that, I would feel more comfortable kind of leaning on them a little bit to make that part of their official responsibility. By Mass General Law, we could appoint just me to do it. We could appoint just Mike to do it. Creating a triumvirate would at least provide some check and balance on that, and that way, we can all feel kind of secure that that fine-tooth comb has gone through it, but that we are another layer of check and balance on top of it. And then we can sign it if we come across it, but they might execute it before we sign it. So, that was my thinking.
I was going to ask, so I think, if I'm correct, I think there's only, I only recall one time where we had difficulty getting enough signatures to get the warrants paid. So, if, most of the time, we're not having difficulty getting those signatures? I don't know, I guess I'm just a little bit confused about why it needs to be as precise. I understand what you're saying, but in that same scenario, if Mike was the designated signer from Bolton, and we had nine people that had signed the document, but Mike was away and had not been able to sign it, then we would be holding back.
That was Crook's amendment. He said, "Or a majority of the school committee members." And I'll admit that, and maybe it didn't go to everybody, but I've gotten a couple of knucklehead emails, like, "Hey, dumb-dumb, you need to sign the warrants." Probably more than you, you're a better person than I am. I've gotten plenty of them. So, it does happen, and, you know, while I'm more, personally, more than happy to be the representative, I know that not everybody is able to get to them immediately. So, you know, if someone knows, "Hey, you are the person," probably encourages them to sign off on those just as soon as they're comfortable doing so.
Not to throw a monkey wrench into it, but also, Mass General Law does not require the committee to vote approval of warrants. So, that's a step we take as sort of traditional procedure, but it does not require an approval of the committee. It's the signature that's the approval to execute the warrants. And so, in scenarios where a school system has a designate that signs the warrants, they're bound to then inform the committee at the next meeting. It doesn't require a vote, in that sense. I think the procedure that is being recommended here allows those wheels to go forward, but then the budget and warrant committee, through the devices that you spoke about, Mr. Hares, looks at those things to then come back to the committee to notify if there's any issue or something we should raise as a concern.
Joe? Yeah, I'm just going to echo what Ms. Parket said. I agree with Sharon, what she's saying. I think it has always been each committee member's responsibility to review and to sign off on the warrants. And I understand the general law doesn't provide for the appointment of one individual, but in Ms. Parket's example, I would do the same. I will always sign the warrants, whether or not I am the designate from the town of Lancaster or not. And I also agree with Ms. Park. It seems to me that the easiest and simplest solution here would be that once one member from each of our three sending communities puts their signature on that warrant, that the business office is then authorized to issue whatever they need to do.
I think that's what the language says.
Is it? Maybe we could read it.
Sure, I'll read it again.
Because it's hard, we don't have a written law.
Right, but I mean, to go back to what Sharon was saying, I don't, the mechanics of it, of, you know, getting together, and, "Oh, you're going to be the designate," and what have you. I think that what Superintendent is saying, just have one person, just one person from each community, once they sign it, that the business office is authorized to act on the warrants, right?
Right, that was my first-to-the-gate metaphor.
But the second point I'm making, which was the first point when I started my speaking here, was that, don't overlook the statutory language that says whether you sign those warrants or not, you're liable.
So, we've got language in there, though. I can read it again.
No, I realize that you put that language in there, but what I'm saying is that this type, and I'm saying it just for, for the purpose of just articulating what I'm going to say, is that I will always sign the warrant, because if the statute's going to hold me liable, whether I sign it or not, I'm going to sign, I'm going to review it, and I'm going to sign it, just for my own personal protection.
Yeah.
But, and I would encourage every member to do that. So, I guess I would go back to what Sharon is asking. Is this a problem? I mean, because Mr. Mulcain said, well, you know, there might be a situation where, you know, we have two communities that have signed off, we haven't had one. But this has been, has this been a recurring problem in the business office? Is this, it has been?
As of late.
Well, to be frank, it doesn't reflect well on our committee. We really need to sign those warrants, and I think it's, I think it's part of your obligation and responsibility as a district committee representative to look at those warrants and sign off on them, so.
I'm happy to read this again.
Please do.
And I'll add the clause that Superintendent Downing offered. The budget and warrant subcommittee recommends that the Neshoba Regional School District School Committee shall require a minimum of three signatories, including one member from each town or a majority of the sitting members, for the purposes of authorizing payroll and accounts payable. This provision shall not limit the responsibility of each member of the board in the event of noncompliance. Once signed by the three members, the warrants can thereby be included as a part of a consent agenda for approval at subsequent regular school committee meetings.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so that's great food for thought. This is something that we'll be asked to vote on the next time we're together. Any final questions? All right, everyone. So, thank you so much for that budget and warrant subcommittee. We appreciate that work, and we'll go on that next time. We're going to actually leapfrog over our letter C here, because we've already had our budget conversation. And the official deliberation, as you guys know, we're going to have the budget hearing and budget deliberation on the 8th, at that additional school committee meeting that we added, which is going to be remote, and on the 15th, we will vote on the budget. Keep in mind, guys, that we're required to have a two-thirds majority for it to pass. So, I did make note in email to all of you that form will be important, so let me know if that's going to be a problem for you to attend that remote meeting on the 15th. School choice discussion, this is not something we're going to vote on tonight. We're going to vote on this on the 15th, I believe. And so, this is a...
We'll have to have a hearing.
A hearing is also scheduled for the 15th, I believe. It's actually posted.
Okay, yes, yes, you have to hear, budget hearing's the 8th, 15th, yes?
Yeah, so, school choice is an annual conversation that every school district must have. Hearing must be had, so that the public can weigh in on school choice, whether or not we opt in or opt, or rather, stay in or opt out by vote. And so, that vote will happen on the 15th. I'll turn to your Superintendent Downing to give us a little bit more explanation.
Yeah, I'll just give some context of school of choice. So, school of choice is a provision where we would accept students to come into our school district. By Mass General Law, you are automatically presumed to be in school of choice. You have to vote to not participate in school of choice, and that's the function of the hearing. And so, you know, it's a provision where students who are outside of our school system would be able to come into our school system, and there would be a reimbursement rate of $5,000. Is that still the amount, Mr. Mulcain?
Yeah, plus associated costs of special education services, if necessary, so.
Correct, so, there's been some questions around school of choice and some rationale around why school of choice was closed, and some of that was, were claims that high-dollar special education cases could be, come into the district's budget, for which we don't have support for. The fact of the matter is in that, if we were in a scenario where that were to happen, there are provisions within the school of choice law where the town in which the child resides in would be afforded the opportunity to place the child in their town into a designated program if it so matches the child's need. And if it doesn't, and that child had to go to an out-of-district program outside of the school system, it is the town of residence that would have to pay for that program, not Neshoba. So, there, we would not be incurring that large cost. And so, as we think about school of choice and the mechanisms for how that can support our budget as well, we pay out approximately $500,000 a year to other school systems for students, for families that have chosen to have their students go to other school systems. And we are coming up, where I think we have three classes remaining in our school system from the previous school of choice approval, at which point, so then, we will be at the point to where we're not bringing in any of those tuitions. So, as we look at that and have that discussion, I'll just remind the committee that as we open school of choice, it's not as if when you open school of choice, you just say, "Anywhere, all grades on schools." You have to, actually get to be selective around that. So, if we said this year, school of choice, we look at our numbers, look at our potential and our growth as they go through the years. Seventh grade at Luther Burbank is a place where we can bring that in without having to bring additional staffing to the school district. We can be that targeted in how we open school of choice. If we wanted to just limit it to, say, high school students, we could. If we wanted to spread it out throughout the grades and just send it to... You can design that the way you want. The fact of the matter is that, once you do open that, you have to announce it, and any families that were to put in applications for school of choice, will then be subject to lottery selection for any of those open seats that you have. And in doing so, as we think about this, I'll entertain any questions from the committee. I will suggest to the committee, this is a desirable element for many of our employees in the school system, because we do not have a mechanism for which employees who desire to bring their children to the school system can do so. And having mechanisms to be able to do that actually makes us an attractive school district for teachers with families that are looking for that career opportunity here. So, with that, I'll just entertain some questions, and then we'll bring a more formal presentation on school of choice to the hearing in two weeks.
Yeah, so, let me just, before I jump into the rabbit hole, let me just say, should we be looking, should we be asking more detailed questions at the discussion two weeks from now? Because I'm prepared to go all in on this conversation.
Right, we can, but I'll entertain any questions that, in terms of any information gathering you would like to have done to bring to that.
Yeah, so, you said, "We spend about $500,000 sending our kids out of district." Does that mean you spend about 100 kids out of our district?
Correct.
And so, if we just closed all our schools, would it be cheaper to send all our kids to another district?
That's, that's one of those questions that has never crossed my mind necessarily.
We give every family a $10,000 transportation voucher that go to their district, and it's cheaper than educating them all here. I mean, I'm being a little bit facetious here, obviously, but just, you know, the optics of it are kind of like, "It costs us how much money to educate the kids? And if someone sends a kid, asks a kid, we get $5,000, and then we still have to sell out another $10,000 to educate that kid." So, is that kind of the right optics in this situation?
And it's, exactly, these are some of the debates that happen with that, Mr. Powell. So, when you think of school of choice programs, and when you open up the C student programs, you try to open up in ways that aren't going to be additional cost to your district. So, for instance, if I have average class sizes of 19 students in a grade level, and we said, "Okay, we're going to open up school of choice not to exceed 20 students at that grade level." We could bring in four without adding an additional teacher or a pair of educator, and we could look at what the enrollment numbers are in the other grades to say, "Would that impact the grade level as they collect together at the high schools as well?" So, you can get very targeted in that way, so it's not impacting the cost of edu, to educate, because that's where school districts can find some value, but...
So, the point is, by participating in school of choice, we're not saying anybody can send their student here. We're saying, "We are going to choose to participate in school of choice, but only in ways that are advantageous to our district." And so, 20 people can apply, we may only accept one of them.
Correct.
Okay.
If that were the rule, and by lottery? So, it's not that, so anybody could come, but not everybody can. Go ahead.
So, we used to have school of choice, right? So, I guess I'm wanting a little context. Why did they decide then to not have it anymore? I guess I'm wanting a little history. I don't know if you know that, because that was a while back, right? But why did they make that choice to get out of school of choice?
The history that was told to me was a potential cost of high-dollar education plans for students who required specialized services, which is why I wanted to clarify the point that that's actually not quite accurate, is that. And, you know, I wasn't in the room at that time. I can tell you a variety of reasons why some school systems do that. My former school system did that, and it had more to do with, you know, overgrown sizes in schools. There were just too many students in the school, and so, the population demands were different at the time. If you look at when school of choice was closed here in Neshoba, it really is at the peak of enrollment where we were at at the time as well.
So, I think it was a space issue. I'd also like to point out that although extreme special education costs would not be footed by us, average special education costs would be.
If we offered that program within our district.
Meaning, not even like sub-separate programs. I'm talking about just the additional services that special education students require.
That is correct. That is correct.
Those costs would be brought into the budget and not mitigated by those trust funds that the state puts out there for extraordinary situations.
Yeah, yes, there's some nuances to that, but as a general comment, that is correct. So, let's say, you know, assume with a moderate disabilities IEP that receiving some services and literacy and that would be accessing those channels. Now, if that child, in addition to that, required, say, special nursing care, that would come along with that. That is something, because that's not a standard program within the district, it's very specialized, that the sending schools, this town of residents would be leveraged to participate in.
But there are a lot of costs that are below that threshold that this district would have to absorb. What's the threshold? Is it $45,000?
So, I'd have to do a little bit more research to the point before, but there's different iterations of, based on service, what the chargeback is to the school of choice program, which is overseen by the state, to the sending district. So, we receive not just a $5,000 per student school of choice tuition out assessment, it's more than that because of some of the nature of some of the plans that students are on, so there's a variation of that as well. So, it would take a little bit more study, and I think a little bit more of a dive into what level of service gets a certain level of, but by no means do I think it's a dollar for dollar.
No.
Right, so that's part of it.
And that would be minus the circumregular reimbursement as well.
Right.
And I would also add too, to that point, and I think it was probably something that was made at the time, is that we look at our grade level enrollment, while we might have space for that, if we take in a student, we obviously can't exclude a student based on an IEP service delivery, but if that student comes in and is already on a plan or becomes on a plan, and it raises the caseload of those special education educators, there's an impact there that's not necessarily seen in classroom size enrollment.
So, is it fair to say that by opening up school of choice, the district does take on some financial risk, which is what has always been explained to me in previous years when this discussion comes up, but I think what I'm hearing from you is that it's, maybe the financial risk is not as great as I may have thought before.
Right, the order of argument, yeah.
Yeah, it's the L placement cost that I think we've historically talked about being so extraordinary, those would be covered by this trust fund, the state trust fund, where there's almost entire reimbursement, and there's help, and the sending district has to pick up the tab and-
Yeah, they have to be afforded the opportunity to educate the child in their hometown first if they offer the program for which is a match for the child, and at that point, if they can't do that, then they need to participate in the placement of that child.
And while we may be able to look at enrollment data and set numbers for how many we'd be able to open up school of choice for per grade, is it by school too?
Yeah.
So, by grade, by school, it's just like, you just, it's names in a hat, whatever names get chosen, those are the students that are in our system, and we have no idea what services they may require, or what services they're already eligible for.
And you might also have kids move into district that then push the enrollment higher in a particular grade level.
Which you can't predict.
Which you can't predict. I would just like to enter into evidence too, that the obvious, that we're about to hopefully get approval for a new high school, which is gonna possibly bring back more kids. I don't know that we are in a position right now to decide school of choice, to open it up, without knowing how many more kids are gonna come back to Neshoba of that 100 for this potential new high school, thereby bringing those enrollment numbers up and preventing us from doing some of the things that we wanna do with high school with the current staff.
So, I think that's the function of the hearing, and we can give into that detail? So, if there's any other questions you want us to bring to that hearing?
The impact of the high school, I think, that's got-
Yeah, three words, just whatever. If we make this decision now, how long does it stay in effect for?
One year.
So, if we, so your concern is, if you open school of choice, if we increase the cohort that then, five years later, becomes eligible for the high school, and they don't know what the high school's status is.
Okay.
And so, another question. So, in order, if, in order to allow our teachers to bring students, do we need to turn on school of choice?
That's correct.
Okay. But would they be subject to the same rules as everyone else applying for school of choice?
Yes.
Yes.
They'd go into the lottery. Other questions?
Well, Scott just asked my question, but I do have a comment, and that is, we have put a lot of emphasis and a lot of talk into equity in the past year or so. I feel really uncomfortable with this conversation around the risk that we have, or that we potentially have of bringing in a student who may have some needs, because if you think about our population right now, we have 25% of our students that have some type of need. That is not unusual, that is kind of standard across the state, is that we have that percentage. So, what we are saying then, or the message that we are giving is that, for 25% of all the families in all of our surrounding districts, we don't want you, and I feel really uncomfortable with that. I understand there's financial pieces of it, but I feel uncomfortable with the idea of choosing to not participate in school of choice based on the fact that we may have a student that has potential of needs.
I take exception to that characterization of this discussion. I think as a school committee, we have a fiduciary responsibility, and for us to not ask questions about what the implications of a decision are would be irresponsible.
That's a two-sided coin. Thanks, guys, for bringing that forward. Go ahead, Lauren.
I may have missed this. I didn't know that there could be, you could target school of choice by open availability and stuff, but once they're in, they're in through.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like you can do fourth grade here, and then-
Till graduation.
Got it.
Any other questions, anything that you want brought forward in the presentation?
Yeah, Madam Chairman. So, just looking at the mechanics of this, so, historically, there has always been a recommendation going into this public hearing from the administration that we should be opting out of school of choice, and there has been very little deliberation and little, very, should say very little, there's been zero public discourse on this particular issue. That was under the prior administration. Under the current administration, there has been some discussion and some suggestions that perhaps this is an issue that we should be looking at. So, with regards to the public hearing aspect of it, it, all we're going to be asked to do on the 15th is to opt in or opt out. Okay, but if there is going to be, I don't know if it can be a recommendation, or if there's a leading towards revisiting the issue of choice, it seems to me that it behooves us as a committee and as a district to at least give some notifications and notice to the public as to what we might be thinking in this regard. It wouldn't necessarily be that we're going to, as the superintendent has indicated, that we're going to open up all schools throughout the district as schools of choice. It might be something, I think, based on what the superintendent's saying, it's probably more inclined that we would look at, we would target particular schools or particular communities where we have the availability for choice. But regardless of what we do, I think as a member of the public, being told there's gonna be a public hearing, I'm always at a want to know exactly what is going to be before the public, for public testimony, and if there's gonna be something more than just an opt-in, opt-out, I think that the public would probably wanna know that, and we might actually get somebody in this year to speak on that issue, so. I don't know if, you know, again, from the mechanics of it, we could open it up for deliberate, excuse me, for important testimony. We don't have to make a decision right then and there, we can continue the public hearing, or we can simply close the public hearing and then open up to further debate at a later date, but I think that if there's any inclination to be a recommendation from the superintendent or from the administration that we would do something other than just a complete opt-in, I'd like to know that in advance of the public hearing.
Yeah.
And so, Joe, to satisfy that concern, wouldn't it work to have your presentation? Then we could open the public hearing, and then we could move toward deliberation?
No, you can't, yeah, you could do that, but the public, the public's not gonna know what the superintendent's recommendation is in advance of the public hearing.
No, but we would have his presentation first, then open the public hearing.
Right, but look, and think of it in terms of a municipality as opposed to a school district. Normally, when you have a public hearing, the notice will go out, and the notice will say, look, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be doing this at this location, you can go to town hall, you can look at the maps, you can look at the records, you can see what's gonna be before the body, and then you can come and get public comment on that. If we do it this way, the public is only gonna be hearing it that night, and they're only, then we're gonna go into our public hearing. I think it behooves us to give the public notification of what we might be thinking seven days in advance, 10 days in advance, or what have you, let them give an inclination, and then it would encourage people to come forward and give their comments on what we're proposing.
What is the deadline, do you know, off the top of your head?
What's the deadline?
So, under, come on, section 12B, which is basically the school of choice section, no later than the May 1st of every year, the school committee of each city, town, or regional school district shall submit a report to the department stating, and it goes in talking about the capacity of each school, the number of students expected to attend, the number of students attending the district under terms of the section, duh-duh-duh-duh. So, I think it's up until May 1st in order to notify the department.
So, when I'm hearing the committee say-
On first glance, I wanna make sure that, this isn't a deep dive into legislation, but on first glance, I believe that's right.
That's right. Perhaps at some future meeting, you could bring to us your recommendation in a more formal way, and then in a meeting after that, we get the hearing and then-
Yeah, we can push back the hearing and form a recommendation and do exactly as Mr., I think that's on par.
Because the deadline's not soon, Scott.
So, you asked for requests for this, right? So, here it is. So, the last five years or something like that, what has been our student-to-teacher ratio on a class-by-class basis to the, and how does that compare to our target student-to-teacher ratio? So, if we had, you know, if our third grade student-to-teacher ratio was 20 to 1 or something like that, and we've had three 18-student classes at the third grade level at one of the schools, then in theory, we've had spare capacity of six kids at that level. I think that's the kinda data that will kinda help us to see in terms of, you know, what's our capacity for picking on more students and no additional cost, right? But that's the kinda data I think we need to see.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I think he along the state lines is, Scott, if you are bringing a recommendation to the committee in advance of the hearing, would it be with specific recommendations for which schools, which grades, based on this enrollment data?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, the way the law is written, you open school of choice, and it's the superintendent's discretion to that, I wouldn't wanna do it that way, 'cause I think we wanna manage that publicly and have it in the record.
Okay, so, Kirk and I will work out the trajectory of this discussion in our planning calendar and keep you abreast of that decision, okay? Awesome, thanks, everyone. Alright, so, moving on to our next item here, and that is a DECA donation, very exciting. So, what else do you have some details on this for?
I do, always good news to share when it comes to donations for our students and our programs. So, Stavros Andropoulos from the high school was kind enough to pass along that we've been receipt of, or looking to approve the receipt of four donations relative to the DECA program, which we know is coming up, the state competition in March, and then the potential national competition in April. So, the request for these donations to be approved is obviously to sort of offset the cost, and then also to award some scholarships on senior night, the amount of $5,000 each for two seniors. It sounds like this is something that they've been doing for a while. So, the donations that they would like to present for approval would be a $3,000 donation from the Clinton Savings Bank, a $1,500 donation from Align Credit Union, a $500 donation from Eastern Bank, and a $500 donation from Workers' Credit Union, and most of those are obviously multi-year with Clinton Savings Bank, this is the 13th year in a row that they've been making donations to this program.
Fantastic, so, these are welcomed, and we really appreciate these donors for giving us these important financial benefits for students. So, I'm gonna turn to my vice chair for a motion.
Alright. Little Joe sitting on my shoulder has given me some guidance, so I'm gonna follow that little voice. Sorry, Scott has a question.
Oh.
I think we should answer that.
Should I ask before he makes a motion, or after he makes a motion?
Go ahead, ask.
So, what's the governance around this kind of stuff? Like, is DECA an organization in the school, and they get money from the district, and this just augments that money, or makes the district pay less money for DECA as a result of this? How's this?
Yeah, augments the requirement of what people then would have to pay out of pocket, and also goes to scholarship students that couldn't do anything for when they travel and things, so they'll have their competition in Boston coming up, it is an overnight competition, so it has some costs.
This talks about scholarships and graduation, not scholarships to attend the competition.
Yeah, there's also, so, senior awards night, there are scholarships that are also given as well, and they're given in behalf of these things, so.
So, effectively, the school district is giving scholarships?
Many.
Okay. Okay, I'll leave it at that.
So, just on the scholarship thing, I have to assume this, but the donors have no input on who gets the scholarships, correct?
Question.
There is a good question.
I don't, I don't have the answer on that, but I would think so, however.
Oh, it's Joe.
I also, also for clarification, the money does not get, the donation does not get income, doesn't go into our operating budget, this would go into the DECA Student Activities Fund, and therefore used to offset costs for students attending the trip, and then, obviously, it sounds like there's a mechanism at the high school that they put some of this money to the scholarship.
So, assuming a motion is coming, maybe we could have some language that we accept this as long as the donors don't have input into who gets the funds in the scholarship?
Is that thing okay?
Yeah, you want us to bring it back, and we'll go back to Mr. Andropoulos and review that with him first, I wouldn't want to throw him a curveball on that.
Can he wait?
Well, the only thing that I would put forward to the committee is that the state competition is the 9th through the 11th, which is-
Yes, thank you.
Is correct, it's prior to the next regular business meeting of the school committee. So, if this money is in part being used to offset the costs for students who are needing financial assistance to attend, that would be the only piece of it.
And so, we could perhaps put into the motion that if, you have an idea?
You're going there.
That, go ahead, you go first.
Yeah, because I think we can make a motion to, because as it's laid out, there would be, this is gonna happen a lot. Two $500 scholarships during the awards of the senior nights, and you see that there is, number three, number four, we both have the value of 500, if you make the motion for one and two, that can certainly address the issue that Mr. Mark Carron is back, because I wanna come back and check on that as well, because I think Mr. Powell brings up a good question on that one as well.
Does that suffice, everyone? Okay, so, Mike?
Okay, so, I will move to approve multiple donations made by local businesses totaling the amount of, correct me if I'm wrong, $4,500, as described in the meeting materials, to defray the cost of future competitions.
It's $5,500.
Well, we're gonna-
I think we should say, number one and two.
Okay, so, we'll amend, we'll amend that to identify donations one and two, totaling $4,500.
Excellent. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thanks, Scott. And so, bring back those remaining two and, yeah, okay. Alright, everybody, so, we're gonna, I'm gonna get back to my agenda here. Next, we thought- Next, we thought objection, because we have special guests here. I'm wondering if we can flip flop our unfinished business so that the regional agreement conversation could come next. Excellent. So if you don't mind, I'd like to welcome to the table two of our R-triple-A-C members. Do you guys mind? Do you want to join us?
We can stay. I don't need the PTSD.
Okay, well, let me, you know, they, they are here for support for us to have more people to add to the answering of questions. Of course, Sharon and I were both members of the R-triple-A-C. But let me just point out to two other additional members, Mr. Brian Boyle, who is the Chair of the Bolton Advisory Committee, and Lorraine Masco, who served as a citizen on the R-triple-A-C. And she also has previous experience as a school committee member too, I will say. So thank you for your experience and all that you guys did for us. All right, guys, so are we ready? There are some things we need to go over. I'm actually wondering if I can drive. Can I have that cord? I hope that doesn't screw everybody up. Thanks, Ross. Because we have a couple of documents that I need to cruise through, not all of which are
Make it.
I think so. It's the mother of all cords. Okay, so, you know, not all of this documentation is in the meeting material, although it will be. But some things came to me today. So In your meeting materials, however, you are going to find the cover letter. And you are going to find the regional agreement. But what I'm going to do is pull up the Word document versions that are just a little bit updated and have a couple of additional comments in them. So you're really going to have to refer to the screens and not so much relying on your computers. Okay? I don't show you anything strange. It's a lot of documents. The R-triple-A-C has been very busy bringing this, getting this ready for you tonight. So there are a few comments that were made at the last meeting, some suggestions that were made that I'm here, ready to bring back to you. So I'll go a little bigger here. As we scroll down, guys, one of the concerns was, and this is a big one, that shouldn't be that high. One of the things that Mike mentioned was, can't we just change this to seats as opposed to members? Desi had no problem with that. So that's a change, but it's a minor one. Then this is a big one. So in the 10-year population review portion of the document, there are a couple of concerns. And I noted them here. Can the committee make a membership change while the amendment process is underway? And what if a town votes no? So Desi responded. And what they said was, once this current amendment gets passed, in the future, a membership change can only be made after an amendment is approved by the requisite number of member towns. So if we fall out of compliance at any point in time, we cannot just add members. We probably, like, that was a little dicey that we did the last time. We do need to amend the agreement before we add members to the committee in the future. That kind of makes sense. But that then begs the next question from Joe, I think, that, well, if you have to ask the towns to approve such a thing, what if a town votes no and puts us in violation of the law? So what Desi said was, and I don't know if you guys don't like this, but they've given us an option. They said, the proposed language of the agreement indicates that the school committee shall review the composition every 10 years. If the towns do not approve, then they run the risk of being in violation of the law. Any amendment must be processed and approved in accordance with the amendment procedure outlined in Section 12 of the agreement, which requires unanimous approval. So you might consider changing the approval process for amendments to two-thirds of the member towns. That's their solution. So if I scroll down to Section 12. This would need to change.
So we were not voting on it?
Sorry?
Does that mean we're not voting on it?
Oh, we're voting. But you will be voting on my changes. So if you guys want to keep it as a unanimous approval, you can decide that. But if you want to make the change right now, that we would change the amendment process to just be two-thirds of the towns needed to approve an amendment, then we can do that. So I want to stop and take any questions or comments on that piece, because that's probably a big one.
Could we possibly just have different vote requirements for amendments? For amendments relating to adjust committee size and limit the scope of what we can pass with two-thirds of the town?
Yeah, so there are a couple of different categories already. So you might notice it says, any proposal for amendment except for proposal of amendment providing withdrawal or admission of a town had to have unanimous. So we could add another class of amendments. Amending the composition of the committee would only take two-thirds vote. Does that make sense? So that's another option.
It makes sense, but the other question is, well, what if only one town approves? So then you're still out of compliance. So wouldn't it just be educating the towns before the vote?
But educating the towns doesn't guarantee that you're going to get an approval vote. But could you just, could you scroll back to the top?
To Desi's comment?
Yeah. So again, this is the thing that's been sort of being, Mike, on it. Under the current agreement, and we started this amendment process in 2020, it's now 2023. And I acknowledge that part of the delay was related to the COVID-19 pandemic. But we were able, under the current agreement, to change the number of members on this committee to comport with the one-person, one-vote doctrine without the necessity of town meeting approval.
I'm going to show the change to everybody. This is the old language.
Right, and Desi is keen to point out that, you know, it's a warning to the towns that if you don't approve the change, then the towns run the risk of being in violation of the law. But on the other side of that coin, doesn't the district expose itself to liability? If it doesn't have the ability to move quickly to address the issue of the one-person, one-vote doctrine? Because as I said, in 2020, we were able to make that adjustment immediately.
But we did it in violation of the agreement. Because the old language says that it had to be by a majority vote in each of the towns.
Thanks, the question, you're talking about classes of votes?
Classes of amendments.
Classes of amendments? Are there some sections of this document that need town amendment, town approval? And other sections of the document that just the committee can approve?
Nope, so they all need, they all need, every single amendment by law has to go to the towns for approval. But the threshold of how many towns need to approve is different for each thing. And so, Joe, I think the old agreement-
I gotta go back and look at that. I thought that under the old agreement, that we were authorized separate apart from a formal amendment process to make that adjustment as we did.
Old agreement. So Section 7, the agreement may be amended by a recommendation of the district by petition. No such amendment shall be made, which shall substantially impair the rights of the holders of bonds. Provision shall not prevent the admission of new towns. Oh, I'm sorry, skipped over it. Right here.
By the majority of each of the towns.
Yeah, so it was-
Go back, isn't it, is it defined under Section 1, so paragraph D?
In the old agreement?
Yeah. The population of a participating town results in a change in the number of members to be elected to the Regional School District Committee. Such change shall be effective at the annual town election following the certification of the census.
That is not allowed. So we tried to put that in the agreement at one point, and Desi said that you can't just do that. That you can't just change the, it has to be by amendment. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan.
Yeah, basically, Desi said that that language in our old agreement was non-compliant. And so that's why we had to do it this way. So although we did make the change, we kind of, it wasn't like an entirely kosher thing to do.
Yeah, we didn't necessarily want to take this up, because this language was in the draft and they made us take it out. So they, so their only solution to us is to lower the threshold by which the amendment process would change the agreement. But I think that to Maureen's point, you could still get one town. Or you could get two towns to say no, and you'd still be out of compliance. And, you know, so you still want a risk there to Shondor's option.
I mean, you could lower the threshold to one town.
Then it becomes risky. I even think that allowing two towns to amend the agreement, I mean, I'm, I'm not a fan of the Articles of Confederation. I know that what absolute majorities can do, but I also wouldn't want two towns taking up on one.
Which is why I think limiting the scope to two-thirds to just changing the composition of the committee to comply with the law kind of addresses that.
Okay, so anybody, anybody think that that change would be better than what we have right now?
I'm in favor of that.
Can I call the committee, honey, or in favor of Shondor's solution?
Can you restate it, please?
Yeah, Shondor.
So changing the language of an amendment so that two-thirds of the towns have to approve, can approve it for changing the composition of the committee to comply with the law?
But all other amendments would have to be absolute majority.
That's effectively what you had up there.
Right now, all amendments are absolute majority, except for admissions of new towns, withdrawing of towns. Those have to be absolute. Well, they just have like a completely different procedure, so they're pulled out. What you're saying is that in the amendment process, we would say that amending this agreement in any way would have to be an absolute majority, except for when we're changing the composition of the committee. That would be a two-thirds majority of the towns. So Bolton Lancaster would say yes, Stowe would say no. The amendment to, on the composition of the committee could pass. Can I get a thumbs up if you guys like that?
Change.
That makes it a good question.
And the, and the language down below, isn't two-thirds already in there for some votes or not?
So for all amendments, it would say, like, for all of our amendments, other than admitting or withdrawing a town. For all amendments, every single town would have to say yes. So what Shondor is proposing is that the only situation that we would allow an amendment to be at a two-thirds threshold is to change the composition of the committee.
It's consistent with what Desi is recommending.
So Desi said we could, I, I think they'll allow us to make two separate amendment categories. What do you think, Brian?
I think, yeah, I think, Kenny. Wasn't that in the comment that they, that was up there?
They said that we could reduce our entire amendment process to two-thirds.
But what is what, I mean, can I say what we discussed as a committee? Because somebody did make this, the same point that Mr. Gleason made, like, well, what happens if, right?
We said it to Desi.
Yeah, and I think the ration, what we thought was that it's actually a really formulaic thing to figure out what the one-person, one-vote requirement produces in terms of numbers of members. And we thought that if, if you laid it out, and maybe you didn't have any other amendments on the table. It was just an amendment focused on the number of school committee members. If you laid it out to each of the three towns and said, this is what the Constitution requires. This is the numbers based on the census. These are the new numbers of school committee members. We found it hard to believe that you would have voters reject that. Because it's not as if we're forcing something down their throats that isn't required by the law. We just thought, we have a reasonable population. And I think our concern was that, was that in the case where it's like, if you just had it as two towns saying to one town, this is the way to do it, then if you thought that that was like an option, then the public education required, you might like, you might not put as much effort into explaining it if you think, well, we can just get two towns to force the third one to do it anyway, so. But that's kind of where we thought.
Which is why we stuck with the unanimous process, because we felt like it would force a better education campaign. It would create, you may be Okay, any other comments on that?
Yeah, that, so I, I kind of, you know, just like what Mr. Boyle was saying. The issue for me was not so much the possibility that a town would vote to not approve an expansion of the committee, though it could happen. I mean, there's one state to the north of us that, weird things happen at town meetings. I'm not saying which state it is, but to the north of us in such part of the east. But, you know, the, the issue that I always liked about the way the original document, the current document is crafted is that regardless of what our towns vote, by having the authority to expand the committee to comport with the one-person, one-vote doctrine insulates the district from any craziness that might happen at town meeting. So my question would then be, Desi is telling us that the current language is out of compliance. And I guess my question, and I'm not, just for edification purposes only, why? Why is it out of compliance? Why do we, why do we need to get on that particular issue where, as Mr. Boyle has just stated, it really doesn't make any difference what the town votes? We would be compelled either, we would be compelled by the federal district court to expand our committee to address that doctrine. So why is the current language, and again, just my own edification, why is the current language non-compliant?
So what I found was that Desi is very, very concerned with consistency. And so what they found was that the language made it inconsistent. That at one point, you say, this is the composition. At a later point, you say, if you want to change anything about this document, you have, you have to go through the amendment process. But then there was this one part that said, except this part, you can change whenever you feel like it. Or whenever the population shifts. So what she basically was telling us is that consistency is key. You need to make sure that, that the document doesn't have any inconsistencies in it. So that, that's what she told us.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And it's also true to say that at the end of this process, say, once it's approved by the towns, ultimately, then it has to be approved by the Commissioner of Education for it to become enforceable. So as we get that, he is the head of Desi, as we get that guidance from Desi, that will be on his desk for final approval.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess my question to you all is, would you like to keep it unanimous? All amendments are unanimous and just trust that our towns will comply with the law? Or do you want to reduce all amendments to two-thirds? Or do you want to create two classes of amendments? So option number one, keep it unanimous. Raise your hand. Do I see four? Five. How many of you guys would rather reduce all amendments to a two-thirds vote? How many of you guys would like to do this hybrid model where amendments changing composition is two-thirds? All other amendments are unanimous? How many, okay, so great, that wins. I think. So how many of you guys would, okay, I'm going to need to bring that, make sure that that's okay with Desi, to create these two classes of amendments. I think it will be. If it is not, would you be, if that is not allowed and that option is off the table, which would you rather, I'm just polling you now. Would you rather keeping it unanimous or making all amendments two-thirds? So how many of you guys say keeping it unanimous? If that's your only choice? How many of you guys say moving to a two-thirds? Okay, so thank you for that polling. We're going to move on to the next topic. Organization of the committee. Organization of the committee. There was a process that was inserted here that I did track down, and it was actually from model agreements. It was not by law, it was not by policy, and Desi actually doesn't care how we organize in June. So, we had previously language that said the superintendent would run the election of the chair, and then the chair would run the election of the vice chair. It does not need to be that way. We can change it to our policy language and say, in the event, the previous chair and chair are no longer members of the school committee, the senior member of your circle acts as the chair pro temp and conduct the election of the chairperson. Also, this, this word was changed from another to any, allowing you to self-nominate. Can I get a thumbs up if you guys are okay with those changes? Anything? Do you want to say anything about that?
No. I do, but I won't.
But you're okay with the way it is?
Yeah, that's fine, that's perfect.
Okay, fantastic. Moving on, look at us. That was already approved. Keep it on going here. This section of Mass General Law, and Brian and Lorraine, I'll lean on you a little bit here too. This section of Mass, the section of Mass General Law that requires school committees to adopt a district budget only says "adopt." And so, there was a concern last week that it seems misleading to say that we prepare and adopt, which was the language in the previous regional agreement and I think just came over into the agreement, because that is not what is required by law, was required by laws that we adopt a district budget. And then there's also a piece that says we present it, which comes in later language. And so, what I've done here is eliminated the words "prepare" and "and," just to basically line with Mass General Law, which is section, chapter 71, 16m. Is everybody okay with that? Yeah, do you, yeah?
Just a comment, because I, I watched last week's meeting and I saw this change. And I heard the concern about like tracking the language in the statute. So in section 16b, it actually uses determine and adopt. So you could say annually determine and adopt.
What does that even mean?
Fine with adopt. Let's take it with adopt and...
Okay, thanks, Brian, for that. How many, can I get a polling of the committee if you want to do, we have two choices perhaps? Keep, prepare, and adopt. Three choices. Determine and adopt on Brian's recommendation, or adopt. So how many of you guys want to keep it prepare and adopt?
Sorry, Leah, can you?
I'm sorry.
You scroll.
Like this?
Oh, the last word was budget. Got it.
Okay, so, keep it the way that it is. And just do prepare and adopt. Anyone, anyone? How many of you guys say determine and adopt? How many of you guys say just adopt? Okay, fantastic. I think it's kind of all the same. Moving, cruising right now. Alright, guys, this was in here last time, I believe, correct? There was concern, I just want to put it on the record, there was, not concern, there were questions from members of our town governance, governments yesterday at the tri, excuse me, at the joint finance committee meeting. And again, at the Stowe Select Board meeting last night, I chatted with our town administrator. They would like to understand a little bit more about this category of capital costs and how the towns will be alerted of these unforeseen capital costs, especially those between $5,000 and $10,000. And I'd like to turn it over either to Superintendent Donovan or Mr. Mulcarren for a little bit of explanation on what, how we're going to handle this, what change.
I think I'll turn this over to Mr. Mulcarren.
So from a big picture view, this is a little bit of a shift in practice, but essentially, from our perspective, the shift in practice just means we need to set up a practice of how this will be enacted. But certainly, I think the most important part is our partnership with the towns and notifying them as soon as possible when unanticipated capital costs between that five and 10 come up. Because obviously, if it's more than 10,000, we're bringing that before capital, as a capital request to the towns through that process. So really, it comes down to notification and obviously having the systems about how we either expended or they expended and then therefore move forward with reimbursement and what the mechanisms are around that.
Because by state law, capital costs are anything $5,000. And over, but our leases that the towns have signed with us give us the opportunity to manage capital costs that are under $10,000. And so Desi was very particular about making sure there's language in this agreement on how to assess, what structures, what mechanisms will be used by the district to assess the towns for these costs, whether it will go through the district budget or it will go through a capital request, whether it go in the town warrant, et cetera. So the unforeseen ones are really the ones that they're concerned about. And so Ross and Kirk are going to be working with the town administrators to make sure that none of that kind of science wipes them, like they get a bill for, you know, four $8,000 costs, you know, like a bunch of lawn lowers breaking or something of that sort, so that they can, they can plan for it.
Right, correct.
Okay, so there's really no change here from the language last time, but I just wanted to make that clear because a couple of questions came through. Brian?
I just had a question because this is different from what the Articles of Confederation looked at. So when the word "assessment" is used in this document, it's typically forward-looking? So, and if what you're saying is that assessed as used in subsection four there isn't always going to be forward-looking, it could be in like throughout the year, I think that's concerning because we're still using the word "assess," which implies that it's determined upfront, it's part of our budgeting process, and it's part of the assessment that, that gets approved at annual town meeting as opposed to like with our FinCom, if there's an unexpected unforeseen expenditure, we have $100,000 throughout the year, we can just, so I think we just need to be clear because...
There's an answer for that.
Yeah, I had three conversations with Mr. Low today around this very thing as we're trying to kick it around it. Because one of the complications we had, let's say you assess it the next year, well, then you're getting dollars in the fiscal year after the year. It's spent, and that's a problem, as we called the auditors today to check in on that. But we think we have a mechanism to handle that issue, understood the E and D mechanism. So let's say, you know, we have that unanticipated boiler issue that costs $9,000 part to get that fixed, right? We would go ahead and fix that using E and D funds, not operational funds. Then we would attach it to that town's next year assessment. So then, when that, July 1 of that fiscal year comes up, that assessment is then conducted and those funds are earmarked and replaced back into E and D.
This was a vocabulary issue though, right? He took exception with the verb "assessed" having a specific meaning of being forward-looking versus say "assigned" or something like that? Like, is, is, I think that's what I heard him say with the choice of word was a problem.
Well, assessment is a, is a very technical term and it's, it's attached to foundation enrollment and it's assessed, you know, as a capital cost as opposed to an operating cost. So the word "assessment" is important, but it's not going to be like, you know, sending a bill over for the next week to be paid. It will be paid through the next year's budget.
So is that the right verb in that location?
Yeah.
Now, I, I did say, sharing that conversation with Mr. Low, that say, you know, we have that particular scenario and we need the part and we got to get the part. In communicating with the town administrators, then he has the opportunity to say, hold on, we don't need to assess it because we have X, Y, Z funds available to pay for that part now. This would be in the event that we weren't able to do that. But it's, it's essentially then the safety net that allows us to do that. So we can, we can function under this language through that, through the assessment mechanism of E and D.
God, you guys are good. Okay, let's keep going.
We didn't come to that answer very easily.
No. All day.
Trying to figure it out.
I think I was texting you guys at 11 o'clock last night, sorry. Okay, so, the incurred debt is, nothing's changed there. Keep it on going here. We talked with Desi. Desi is, they told me that we do not need to put in as amended after each MGL reference, it's not necessary, so be it. Keep it on going here. Okay, so this is really the last piece, the amendment piece. Now, that was the last piece that I had. The Audit Advisory Committee has sent me something today, and so I do want to go over that with you guys. And I know that it is so late and you guys are so good. I really appreciate all of your attention to this. So, I'm going to pull up the Audit Advisory comments that were sent to me by Maureen. Thanks, Maureen. The Audit Advisory Committee met last night?
This afternoon.
This afternoon, yeah. And they took a look at the Audit Advisory section of the document. And at first, I saw Maureen's comments, I was like, no! She says a lot. But Maureen and I chatted on the phone, and it's really not as complicated as the comments might make it look. So, Maureen's Audit Advisory Committee has made a couple of recommendations to us, and we can adopt them if we see fit. And I'm also glad that you guys are here because you can kind of weigh in too if you want to. As you guys know, the mandated annual audit is mandated by Mass General Law. That's not to be discussed but, or debated. But, Maureen, do you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight to everyone that this is going to be a bit of a change from the current process. Because the contract with the independent accountants, that's, that's typically signed by the school, the administration, and it should actually be signed by the school committee, is what we've learned. And then the copies of the audit reports need to be distributed to the towns within 10 days of receipt. That's usually handled by the administration as well, but we can work with the auditors so that we get the audit reports and make sure that it gets distributed.
And that's within 10 days of us receiving it in the public meeting?
Yeah, so that, that's a change to what we're currently doing, but it's what's mandated based on that. Is that a law, the MGL?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight that it's different from what's going on now.
Excellent, so...
So what's actually changing here?
Nothing is actually changing other than the way we're going to do business moving forward. So this language is pretty stock standard. We're just going to need to be a little bit more in the loop on this.
Quick question on that, and it's just for clarity for our purposes. Typically, once they're presented, we post them on our website. But this, we would have to specifically like target deliver these to the towns, that the public posting of that is not sufficient for that requirement.
I would think there's no harm in doing it that way.
I just want to make sure.
I know that they were sent out to the towns this year.
Yeah.
Just not within 10 days, but...
Post on the, that's what I'm asking, post on the website.
Let's just be clear. So this language says you shall provide it.
Yeah.
Versus, shall make it available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so if you put on the website, that would be making it available. Providing means you actually have to deliver it to them.
Al, you were always so good with clarity.
Language.
And that's the actual law language, right? We didn't make that up.
I think the last, yeah, yes. Okay, then, over to the other side of the coin, which is this five-year forensic audit. This is new language, and actually, if you guys don't mind bearing with me here, you will notice that in our cover letter, in our cover letter, it says, "The current version provides for the existence of an Audit Advisory Committee to review the district's financial reporting. The proposed version will ask for that annual audit, yes, but also this additional forensic audit every five years." We talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. The Audit Advisory Committee has asked that. Maureen, would you like to illuminate?
Yeah, so the proposed language that we went over last week, it said that we would perform a forensic financial audit of the district's financial affairs and operations every five years. And at other times, we're suggesting changing it to four.
Which would... Do what?
Which would make it so that the forensic audit doesn't have to happen every five years, but it could, or it could happen more frequently as well.
So this means it could be six or seven years between audits?
Forensic, forensic.
And then we added down below.
Moving down?
To the powers and duties of the Audit Advisory, what would call for a forensic audit?
Can you read that out loud?
Yes, so this new power and duty of the Audit Advisory Committee basically puts the Audit Advisory Committee in charge of, you know, saying, it says, "If a stated reason for concern exists, the Audit Advisory Committee would recommend to the school committee the hiring of an accounting firm to perform a forensic financial audit. The Audit Advisory Committee will recommend the scope of that audit to be performed. They may meet with the auditors throughout the process, will receive the reports prepared by those auditors when available to the district and the committee, the report after, report after receiving the results of the forensic financial audit to the full committee on the outcomes of the audit."
Yeah, so it's very similar to B and D above, which is the annual audit process, but then it clarifies that if there's a stated reason, but a stated reason for concern exists, then a forensic audit would.
And so just to give one more key of clarity, Maureen, can you tell the committee what you told me earlier on why you think a forensic audit should not be mandated every five years?
Yeah, because forensic audits are specifically to look for fraud and/or investment. And you have to really have a scope for what the auditor should be looking at, because you define procedures and exactly what they're going to be doing. So if you don't have a concern, then the scope's super broad and they don't really know what they should do. And it would get super pricey if you wanted them to look at absolutely everything.
When's the last time a forensic audit was done?
Oh, I, I read it today. It was done in 2016. The report was issued in December 2016.
No, that was basically going to be my question, like, are we doing them every five years? When was the last one, so? So if, if we want to hear from a member of the gallery, Maureen, do you want to give, and you don't have to, I don't need to put you on the spot, but do you want to provide a little bit of history on the last forensic audit? Very quick history, but why did it, why did we have that done?
The last forensic audit was done on the recommendation of the auditors because there were elements of the, but the budget you guys are responsible for is massive, and it's really almost nearly impossible to be able to understand what every single number is and what's behind every single number. There was, at the time, it was the second time the district had gone through financial fiscal malfeasance. And it, it was, according to the attorneys that reported out publicly, some of the activity was illegal. The reason that the recommendation is made to the committee to have a regular cadence is because it is a repeat. You know, in financial services, they say past performance isn't indicative of future results. However, past performance is an indicator of probability. So if there is no forensic audit that is expected as a regular cadence, then I would suggest there probably isn't going to be a time when someone's going to say, well, let's do it, right? Like, if you're saying, no, let's decide when we want to do it and we don't want to do it. So that's one thing. And if you don't like the five years, expand it to 10. But I really think you should consider that, given the explosiveness of what has been found two times. The first time I wasn't around. The other thing I would say to you is, your current superintendent came into the district with a fairly clean budget. His predecessor did not. And the only way that his predecessor got a somewhat clean budget is because we had the forensic audit. So I really think that the communities, unfortunately, they, sometimes they have like short memories, and with stuff like this, they have really long memories. So I would suggest that you find a way to keep it in.
Thanks, Lorraine. Shondor?
I'm wondering, could we perhaps put that in a policy instead of the regional agreement? So that at least we could revise it without needing three towns to approve the cadence with which we do it. So 20 years from now, we want to change this, we can vote as a committee to do it as opposed to having to get an amendment to this.
So that's an option. That's an option. Well, Scott?
How much is a forensic audit, how, how much was the one in 2016?
$10,000.
That doesn't sound very expensive. How much is a regular audit?
Well, we have their services for the year, so I'd have to pull out the actual... I can look into it.
Probably more than $10,000.
Yeah.
I saw the year.
2017, but I'm sure it's changed 2020.
But it's not, it's not free, right?
So I just, so I'm uncomfortable with the idea of eliminating the requirement because if you take it away, then someone, if someone will be more tempted to conduct malfeasance because they know no one's going to look... because they know no one's going to look over their shoulder ever, so, you know, Maureen, so I, that, I'm uncomfortable with the idea of taking it away. I'm open to Shonda's suggestion, but I'm not sure if this is binding if it's in another location.
Scott was just talking about my, what I love to talk about, and that is the nefarious future. So I appreciate you talking about that, like, we just don't know in the future what might come to pass, so that's a good point.
I, when I read one of Maureen's comments about adding the or after five years, I interpreted it differently. Could you scroll back down there so we can read it again? Because the way I read it was that we should solicit proposals in contract with an independent public accountant to perform a forensic audit every five years, or at other times at the discretion of the committee. So the way I read that was, we're going to be doing it every five years, or more frequently, not less frequently. That's how I read it.
So we can change the language a little bit.
So, yeah, the intent was either more or less, but we wanted to keep the heart of what was already there.
I would like to give voice to another option that I heard, and that is, you could put it back to and and make it every 10 years. So you could do a forensic audit every 10 years and at other times that the school committee decides. There was language in there that said it will happen every time we get a new superintendent. That was removed and just made that it would be at the discretion of our committee. So Sherica?
All right. So we have, or we are required to have an audit annually. And Maureen, I think you said that the reason that the last forensic audit was done was because the auditor recommended it.
Auditor, okay.
Auditor saw that there was something not right and recommended a forensic audit.
Right, well, we also, yeah, it was...
That was, that's an oversimplification.
No, you're fine.
Okay. So what I'm wondering is, would it be, could we just leave it open-ended as a forensic audit if the audit indicates that we need further examination of the records?
That's another option, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, the auditor doesn't typically rat out the auditor, right? So the auditor, if they find a mistake, they're going to let Ross know and fix it, right? But an auditor isn't going to say, "We've been auditing your books for five, seven, eight years, and we found, we found stuff that we missed five, six, seven, eight years ago." So, and I think maybe it's helpful to understand the difference between an audit, which is a skin coat, right, and a forensic audit, which is, you know, you go deep in an area. So I still think there's place for both of them, but I hear what you're saying, and it makes sense.
I'm going to ask Brian, go ahead.
And just to add for your deliberation, so this, the idea of a regular cadence of a forensic audit has been in this draft for over a year. So I just want you to know that, like, if it were to come out at this point, I know the town of Bolton would be, at least the people that, like, our select board has reviewed various versions of this, it would be a big surprise to them, because they have been under the impression that this was now part of it, and it was very reassuring to them. So I think maybe we could sell like a 10-year, but I think having at least some regular cadence is really important to the towns.
And I like how Maureen has introduced this piece, that the Audit Advisory Committee will hone the scope of that and be in charge, and like, what a great function for that committee to serve.
So I spoke with Markham, I called Markham, who is our auditor, and asked them about how typical it is to have a forensic audit. And our auditor, with whom I spoke, said that he audits roughly 15 districts, give or take. Many of them are regional. It is not typical for them to include a regularly cadenced forensic audit. He also said that at worst, requiring a forensic audit would be overkill, but at best, it could provide safeguards for misconduct that is falling under the radar. Maureen, you mentioned the possibility of maybe going to 10 years. I actually think 10 years is too long, because if we wait 10 years, that could extend beyond two different administrations. I think we should be doing it regularly, we should have a third-party forensic analysis every five years, or more frequently as required, but at a minimum every five years. And I think for $10,000, if that number's correct, for $10,000, if we can have peace of mind for five years, I think that's short change. My only concern is if we have no sense if there's any kind of misconduct, how do we provide the guidance on the nature of the audit? And I have no idea, that's not my field. That would be my only concern, but I actually am in favor of a regularly scheduled forensic audit at least every five years, just so that we have a third party sort of looking into our work. That's my sense.
All right, so before I go forward, it's 9:06, and I'm hoping you guys can hang with me for just a little bit longer. Can I get a thumbs up if you're willing to keep this going? I'm going to try to move quickly. Scott?
So just, I, again, in the sense that there is, that the committee wants to keep some language in here around requiring a case, a forensic audit, maybe you should poll and see what people's comfort level is around five, seven, 10 years?
Can I get a five-year?
Oh, Maureen?
One thing.
Okay.
So the Audit Advisory Council is all for the forensic audits. We just wanted to put a precautionary word in there so that it doesn't necessarily have to be every five years. So if we're in that fifth year, and we're like, what should we have them, what should the scope be, like, what are we going to have them target? And we can't think of anything as an Audit Advisory Council, that's why we wanted the or, because we have to define the scope.
Got it.
It's a plausible. You have a forensic audit, and then two years after that, you have some indicators that there's something wrong, to the point that Miss Mazone's making. If at that point it's locked into the fifth year, then the Audit Advisory Committee wouldn't have the authority to do that. You know, Maureen, yes, superintendents do like audits first.
Well, there is language that says, "At the discretion of the committee," you know, it doesn't have to be just five.
Okay, so it's on the chat.
It's, I think it's okay. Yeah, Shonda?
So I'd like to propose that we change it to 10 years and then set a policy to do it every five years? So for the short term, it stays the same, but it means that we have a little more flexibility?
All right, so I feel like we have some options on the table. We can go, we can keep it the way that it was every five years and at the discretion of the committee. We can move it to every 10 years and at the discretion of the committee. We can create some sort of a hybrid situation where there is a policy that intertwines with it. We can get more detail there if we want. And then, am I leaving out an option?
I'd like seven and.
Or seven, so it looks like five, seven, 10. Can I just get a poll on the committee? How many of you guys like to keep it at five? Raise your hand high so I can see a number.
That's what we're asking, you're there.
All right, we're there.
Everybody.
Thank you, guys. And this is going to go back to and at the discretion of the committee, so that it has to happen every five years. Okay.
I wouldn't, I would also just say, I wouldn't go with the $10,000 cost. I mean, that was like two hours of a partner sign-up my firm, but I know we're using smaller firms, so the price has definitely increased since 2016.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little...
And another thing that should be noted is, we switched auditors at that time, so they did, our current auditors did the forensic audit in 2016, and then that next year, we switched to them. So I don't know if they gave us a deal or what.
No, they did not, I'm sorry. They did not. They, they, they were brought in because they did the audit, because they knew that.
Because we would always lowball with new clients to get the business.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm seeing on the screen at the end of the year, it looks like some new language about the committee should receive results of a forensic financial audit in public session. Is that a new change?
That is a Maureen suggestion.
That's copied from the annual, right above. So like, the same thing as the annual.
So I'm just wondering if this is to detect fraud, and presumably that would be a district employee potentially committing the fraud, and therefore a personnel matter, we may not want to discuss it in public session. Would the auditor call out the offender in that situation?
Yes.
If they were to identify fraud, they wouldn't necessarily say, "So-and-so did it."
So we, that language does not exist in the, in my version, and so it doesn't have to be there. It would probably be in executive session, no matter what.
So I...
We eliminated it.
Couldn't I just say, we presented to this, I think, wasn't your concern that the audit is handed to the school committee? Like, that we have ownership of it, as opposed to it being over to the...
Yeah, that sentence was just for consistency with the annual audit.
I mean, the expectation is that the committee is soliciting the proposal and signing the contract, so the audit would belong to us and we'll receive it in executive session. I'm just going to really quickly go back to Maureen's copy here and just say, are you guys okay with this language that kind of, or some version of it, that gives the Audit Advisory Committee the authority to determine the scope, to recommend the accounting firm, recommend the scope, meet with the auditors, review the reports, and then present to the committee? Can I get a thumbs up if you're okay with that section?
Can I say something?
Please do.
We should probably remove, if a stated reason for concern exists, because that was only there if we weren't going to do the five-year.
Okay.
So, and other.
I have nightmares about this document, just... Okay!
You shouldn't start with recommend, right?
Now I'll doctor it. Well, definitely, I should, because it's a report.
Okay, okay.
Recommend, recommend. Maureen, was that the last part?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. All right, so I do need to get one final determination on the amendment piece. I think that what we said was that you guys were cool with doing two classes of amendments, but if Desi was not going to allow that, you want to keep it unanimous. Is that correct? So that is what we are voting on tonight. You are giving me the authority to make that decision for you, based upon the email Desi sends to me tomorrow.
It's in a minute.
Good, come on, guys. Are we ready?
It's recorded.
Are we ready to take a motion on the regional agreement as amended this evening?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I do have one minor point, and it's a minor, it'll only take a minute, but I really would like to hear from all the members of the Amendment Committee. It goes back to the vacancy provision, and I'm still at a loss as to why we would add in this additional administrative requirement, that vacancies need be filled by all those entitled to vote. And you know, I bring this up at this point, and I'm glad that former Chair Ramasco is here, because about four years ago, when she gave her party remarks, I distinctly recall that one of her party remarks dealt with the issue of the town of Bolton and the hope that someday that Bolton might have an additional vote on this committee. And I think that her comment is always, it sort of echoed and resonated with me, because I understand the importance of having, you know, full representation on this committee. Just prior to my coming on the committee, there was one vacancy, well, there was a vacancy on this committee, not just a vacancy, but there was an individual who wasn't able to come to the meetings. So for a period of time, the town of Lancaster was unrepresented, at least of one of its seats. Immediately upon my getting on the committee, we had a new member resign, and we went nine months before we got someone to fill in that position. I don't think that there is, you know, a huge amount of interest in serving on any boards and committees, especially in my town of Lancaster, but, but it baffles me as to why we would create this additional barrier to filling a mere vacancy, which is, and under terms of the agreement, both this agreement and the last agreement, it's only to fill out until it is elected. The language you put in there regarding all those entitled to vote allows those who choose not to attend the meeting to essentially influence the outcome. So I'm just curious as to why we would want to do that, especially where we, I suggest we don't have to do that. We could just leave a very simple majority of those who are attending to a point of vacancy. So I'm just really curious as to what the committee's position on that was, why was it so, why was it necessary to add in that additional requirement?
So I'll start by saying that this language comes from the municipal side of Mass General Law, that that is, we lifted the language directly. So I don't know that it was a choice per se, as much as it was just using the language that already existed. And so I think that what Joe was pointing out, just to be clear, is that instead of saying this right here, it would say, "The votes of those present."
Correct.
So I'm not sure if that would be lightning rod for Desi, one just never knows. So I don't know if we change this, if they would take issue with it, but on principle, I've already told this to Joe a couple weeks back, I like it this way, because, A, we've just used it three ways, three different times, to fill vacancies with people who are sitting with us today, and it worked. I watched it work all three times. But more than that, it forces us to bring everyone into the room who is entitled to vote, because if not, you could have a nefarious future where you choose a day to take this vote, when you know that certain people do not be in attendance, and therefore you are able to ignore their voice. And so I think that it makes, it forces those in power to pick a time where everybody is able to be there, to take the vote, to fill a vacancy for a short period of time. And that was what I told Joe the other day, I'll tell you now. I think that it makes sense. It's worked three times in the last six months. It wasn't a problem, but if it is a problem, you know, the amendment process is there for us.
But, Madam Chair, the processes that were either used or supposed to have been used were pursuant to the current agreements, not this new language. So it wouldn't have made any difference...
But this language is in the old agreement.
No, it's not. The agreement, the, the, the language of the current agreement provides for a simple majority, it does not require of all the officials entitled to vote. You know, you talk about the nefarious side of influencing the outcome. It can also be done by people not appearing at that vote. That vote, their failure to appear, would then result in essentially a negative vote against the candidate. In the general election, it takes but one vote to get, to be elected to this position. And we've had, we've gone back and forth with this. You've taken this language from Chapter 41, Section 11, which is a statute which addresses vacancy, filling of vacancies...
On points.
...in towns and cities.
Right.
We are neither a town nor a city. And I explained to the Madam Chair a number of times, you look at any number of regional school agreements that have been adopted in the last five years, none of them have this language. And I think, I think, I think about my community, we went the better part of a year without one representative, and it just doesn't make any sense to me why we would create an additional barrier to serving out, it's not even, you don't even serve out the term, you serve out until the next general election, for anybody who's willing to step up and serve on this committee. It's a minor point, but still, I, again, it's incongruent with the general election. All you need, you could have 1,000 people vote, and 999 of them blank their votes for school committee, it takes but one vote for that person to get in. I'm not sure why we are heightening or enhancing the importance of filling a vacancy over anybody who's running for general election, so...
Any questions?
Can we just poll the committee?
So Brian or Maureen, did you want to weigh in on it?
I mean, I'll just say that this, our discussion here, I was really relying on feedback from members of the Article ICA that had served on our school committee, because I, I'm not as familiar with how it's played out. And it seemed like the school committee members thought that this language in the draft would work, and there was a concern about, because it involves like a select board, you wanted it to be, in some... to be, in some select boards that only have three members, you wanted it to be of the people entitled to vote because you wouldn't want to be in a situation where just like, essentially one select board person was able to be the deciding vote. I think that came up too.
Yeah, so keeping more people in the voting pool, I, I don't, I don't like to make this equivalent to a general election. I think that this is filling a vacancy that you only have five people potentially who could be voting on who you represented for this. And you have no choice in the matter as a resident. So you're relying on your proxies to put somebody in power. I want to know what they all have to say about that person getting that seat. And so it would be incumbent upon us to get everybody in the room who's entitled to vote. If there's a vacancy in your delegation, that is the seat that you're trying to fill. So that person's absence doesn't matter because they are the vacancy. It's up to remain, the people entitled to vote who remain. And so in the way that we did it for Shondor, the way that we did it for Scott and Maureen, all of these processes worked. And that's why I thought it was best because it puts more people in the room to make that proxy decision.
So I obviously wasn't around for a case of those. But I thought I recall hearing that someone did it technically design until the replacement was appointed. And then wouldn't that make them eligible to vote?
I'm not sure how Kate handled it in Lancaster. I actually wasn't present, but yeah, I mean, Sean was holding that card. Now, I think, was he at the select board meeting?
No, he was not.
So he's a no vote, but I think it was unanimous otherwise.
But, but again, you keep bringing this up. We weren't operating under this new language. We were operating under the old language.
But we used it. That's the process that they used. And they used it in Stowe too, and it was largely because of the Stowe Charter. They used it, they operated under the Stowe Charter language.
With respect, Madam Chair. It would have only taken but one vote to put Mr. Simon into the position of Easter Windsor's chair at that time if the.
Because?
Well, it would have just been a simple majority of those who were attending. If there's only one, well, not one, you can have a meeting with one select board member. You could have a meeting with three select board members, the two of them could have stayed. It would only take one vote, it would have only taken one vote if none of the school committee representatives were there and it was just three select board members. If one voted in favor of Mr. Shandor and the two voted, either didn't vote at all or voted again, no, excuse me, if they wouldn't, if they stayed from voting, he would be in. So I know that, you keep talking about.
And I think that's my problem. I think you've just proven my position is that I don't want there to be a process in place where one vote can determine it.
I understand that. And again, I'm thinking of in terms of my community. So you would have to have, you have six members, three select board members, three school committee members. If two, if one member of the select board and one member of the school committee doesn't show up? And one person votes against the candidate and three vote for favor, they don't win. Is that the barrier we want to set to fill a vacancy? Every other regional school agreement, I haven't seen one, and I've asked if there is or isn't. I've looked at a number of different regional school agreements. None of them have this language. All of them have a simple majority.
And I will say that although we are a regional agreement, we're different group municipal boards, every other municipal board in the state of Massachusetts requires it. So that is, I think, just to appease the committee, that is why we chose it. But I know that everybody's looking very tired. Can I put it out to everybody else? That's okay, but let's, let's hear from other people and see what they think. We've talked enough. Anybody else want to weigh in? Uh-oh. Alright, how many of you guys would like to investigate some other way of doing this other than what's in there?
Madam Chair, I'm not asking you to change the agreement. I'm just asking for an explanation as to what was the mindset behind doing this.
Okay.
It just doesn't. We have such difficulty in filling vacancies that we would add in this additional layer that would prohibit. Two simple questions. You live in Lancaster, are you registered to vote? He answered yes, the vote is good enough for me. So.
It was a little bit more contentious than Stowe. So, and, and the reason why we inserted this language was to, not contentious, but there were, there were candidates, right? Contested is the word. So I've given you my rationale. You guys can, can agree or disagree with that particular part. But questions?
By all the work that's been done to date, the amount of people that have already looked at this, including Desi, all the other members of our. This point where we should, if we delay the vote of this, we're going to be putting this back. So I think if we pull members and the majority, no offense, if the majority of members are okay with this language, we should just move forward and.
Our majority of us in favor of it as it is right now. Maybe Joe with the.
Except for the agreement, with the exception of that one piece.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to bring up one thing under audit. So it's section C. Audit Advisory Committee. It's really, it's like, it's, you're gonna love it. It's a good chat. Nothing to discuss. So letter B, the audit advisory committee will recommend the scope of any audits performed may meet with the auditor. Should meet instead of may. Because we should be meeting.
Is that okay to everybody? Shall? Can I get a thumbs up? Two thumbs up. Alright, guys, I am really. Chair, would you like to make the motion?
I need some help with the language, but I will say, yes, I will move to accept. With the amendments.
Subject to your consultation with Desi on.
Consultation with Desi, I mean, on the.
Subject to. Your consultation with Desi.
We need that. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Well, before that, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Amy. Let's open it up to discussion.
In case they, in case they don't, because that's why we thought that the other word was in there. What was the other word? That covers that. So should, they should meet, that's their duty.
Before, with the affirmation, she said.
What do you think? Karen, what do you think?
It's required, I mean, it's, it should be required.
I think it's a requirement.
Yeah.
Required by.
We like audits. I mean, it's a lot of work. We like.
Yeah. What if it's not built?
We will.
It's three members of the towns. Like Stowe's not built right now.
We shall. Never leaving. Won't she get in? Okay, so.
We are haunted by.
I have the 20-year past. Any more discussion? Oh my good God. This is it, guys. All in favor, please raise your hand. You to shake. Thank you to Maureen and Brian for being here.
And to Mary McCarthy.
And most of all to. Started this process years and years ago, and she, I hope is proud tonight to see us bringing through the commission. So let's hear it for. Over yet. Yeah, thank you for pushing it forward. Yeah. Alright, so. Agenda's not over yet. So we do have one more vote to take in this on the district calendar. For, is anybody looking to, can I just poll the committee really quickly? Is anybody hoping to maybe make significant changes? But is, is anybody like really struggling with this or?
Well, so I did reach out with.
It's going to be a slight modification to the.
It's already been done.
It's already been done. So we want to move forward. Mike, do you want to give us a motion? It is.
The 20, sorry, I will, I will move to approve the 2023, 2024, the Shiloh Regional School District Calendar.
I'm going to second that. Discussion, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Yeah, I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Stryker to give a summary of.
Mindful of the hour. Thank you, though. I'd like to point out to you a couple of differences between the calendar. I'll share several questions and concerns at the last meeting that I can speak to. But most impactful and most. Suggestions from the school committee members, we feel really thankful because I think they improved the intention of the calendar and the, you know. Underneath March, April, and May, where's that, where's that text box?
Can we share the most recent version? Is that available?
And just scroll down a little bit. There you go.
To highlight and to reinforce the obligation of our administrators and I. And respectful about accommodations to be made for children who've got, may have some impact on. During observances of culturally religious holidays. So the first paragraph there was. Adding that last sentence in the first paragraph, it's all crystal clear. Makeup privileges should be the same as makeup privilege. That's a wonderful change, I think, from last time. Also down below last time was pointed out that once you go to the. Page, that there's some, there's still some investigating to do to get to the calendar of observances. So I changed the link there so that it. There, on the left, it has what's happening that particular month. And then downward, downward resources and there, and it calls. Changes. Alita.
Calling Alita, I think.
No, 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 I was gonna say. Yep. Alita very kindly put red text boxes on the first. These are the changes from last time. And then on the upper right-hand side, we changed the pre-K. School personnel services. Because on that day, there's no school for the then-current pre-K students. That's. Put it colored around the calendar as a no-school day because it's just for the pre-K and we didn't want to cause any confusion. Plus those students are informed. Day off. Also in the section, this was something that one of the school committee members pointed out last time, that the holiday on June 19th. Down below, but not on top, so we added that. Lastly, since our last meeting, our friends. There is going to be voting on March 5th for the presidential primary. We thought so, but it hasn't, wasn't confirmed. So therefore, we're going to have no school. March 5th. So that, because that's not a school day, it moves a couple of different things. It moves the last day of school from June 12th to June 30th. To June 21st, my anniversary with five snow days. The underclass late start days for. Shift a day from June 10 to 13, from June 7, then the weekend in 10 to 12. And this will be disappointing to some. Senior finals to May 28th or May 24th because of the weekend and the last day of the finals from the third. The high school quarters, the last quarter will just be, will just be one day, one day longer. There were two questions, I think, for me last time that I. These days because five of the six days it turns into a long weekend because there's the early release professional development day on Friday and then the late start on Monday. And Jody and Kate Boynton said that we used to have Wednesdays, the late start days on Wednesdays. They found out that on, having those on Mondays got a better flow, you know, they thought for the students in terms of their energy and their engagement. Certainly noticeably. And they said that the Monday late start days have worked well for them. The other thought was. I had to find out why this was, I couldn't remember why. To move the November 16th and 17th conferences to November 8th and 9th so we would have one full. Holiday. The reason we put them on the 16th and 17th, it's a high school reason. The first quarter. Have one week to get their grades in for the first quarter, for all the quarters. So they do on November 9th. So if the conferences were instead. Just three days to get their grades done rather than a week, that, that's pretty quick. Or we could hold off the first. Probably like the 14th or 15th. That's problematic. It would give the teachers more time, but it's problematic especially for the seniors because the seniors. They need to have their first quarter grades in early in November. UMass, Jody told me UMass now sets the first. November 10th. So that's why we didn't move, that's why we didn't have that full week by moving the. This is the calendar as we're proposing it.
Hey, Andrea Marie, that was awesome. And so much work.
Uh, just a little minor typo.
Oh, no. I was doing my best proofreading.
The April 5th early release PD day is on the text on the top right, it's the 15th of the month.
Dang, okay. So it should say April 5th.
Not 15th.
Yeah, so the motion was like as presented this evening, and so that will include. Well done.
Thanks, Andrea Marie.
This is so great. Alright, everybody, wow. That moves us to subcommittee reports, which I feel is like our abandoned child these days. Reports that is really pressing that you would like to present.
I would just say that the audit advisory. To discuss the plans for meeting with the auditors next Thursday. So we are having a meeting with them if there's anything.
So shoot Maureen an email about that?
It's for understanding the FY '22 audit and then we hope to. Discuss final results.
And Maureen, move to adjourn. Thank you so much, guys.